If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I know Harbor Media is going to be recording, and I see Jenna Manto's hand from the Hingham Journal, so I think she's going to be recording too. Mark, did you have a question? Mark Lynn from Harbor Media? No, I think you said it might have been up before. So I would also note that I am Carrie Nee, I'm the Chair of the School Committee, and I'm participating remotely, as are my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Curante, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. And because it's been asked before, we want to keep the ball in front, there are, in addition to the panelists, there are 57 people on the call right now. So the next item is to, it's an action from executive session, which is to consider a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, regarding the reopening of schools and to act as appropriate. I think Liza is going to take us through that one.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. So we have been working with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, for the agreement for the reopening of schools related to COVID-19. We had very collaborative and open discussions of the challenges facing the teaching staff and the administration on ensuring a safe and productive school year. The scheduling of the sessions was a challenge. We had six members on the Hingham Public Schools team and six members for the HEA team. It created scheduling challenges, and we faced a few last-minute emergencies and the power outages also to contend with, which is the reason for the delay, but it was a very collaborative approach. We did agree with many of the similar health and safety provisions that we had for our facility operations last year to continue with those, including HVAC system operations and filter replacements to ensure safe air circulation, having portable air cleaners in classrooms where needed, carbon dioxide testing devices will be maintained for the buildings to ensure proper ratios of air quality, and the testing will be, continue to be done periodically throughout the year. District personnel will be provided personal protective equipment, including variety of masks, face shields, disposable gloves, smocks as needed. Staff were agreeing to continue to wash and sanitize their hands regularly, stay home when sick, and clean up their workspaces. And the district will work with the teachers, and the district will be responsible for removing furniture or rearranging classrooms to maximize distance between students and staff. It was agreed by both parties that any individuals entering school buildings will be required to wear face covering according to school committee policy, and we did agree, as we normally do, to discuss any change in a proposed policy with the HDA, just as we do with all of our policies. For mask and, if applicable, snack break times for each school building, those will be mutually determined between the building administration and their respective staffs. And so staff will have the option of providing the mask for snack break in their classroom or designated indoor spaces if weather does not permit to have those outside. And as a result, plans may be different in different buildings, different individual classrooms, depending on the circumstances for that teacher and that building. To allow for cleaning to prepare the building for the next school day, it was agreed that teaching staff will leave one hour after the last afternoon activity in the building so we can continue those, the cleaning that we had been doing last year, and to make it effective. It was discussed and understood that the district has experienced classroom temperature fluctuations due to the age of certain buildings, particularly foster school, and that there have been malfunctions of boiler systems. And these classroom conditions are particularly relevant to COVID-19 operations for in-person learning due to air quality. A process was outlined in the agreement of how staff can notify the building principal and how we'll determine how to mitigate any problems that exist. As, also, as done last year, the school nurses are being, offered the opportunity to volunteer for two additional paid job responsibilities outside of their contract day. Again, this year, including assisting with any faculty COVID-19 testing and also assisting with contact tracing activities for the Hingham Public Schools as needed outside of normal workouts. As far as any COVID sick leave provisions, it was agreed that HEA members are expected to follow the options available to minimize an employee's time out of work. So they are expected to obtain and maintain full COVID vaccination status, subject to any approved exemptions, to participate in the test-and-stay program as, as applied, and also to seek testing and consult with a physician wherever there's an applicable circumstance. Members who are close contacts of individuals who test positive for COVID-19, who need to quarantine due to a positive COVID-19 diagnosis, who need to care for a family member who's quarantining, or who need to get vaccinated and/or recover from a COVID-19 vaccination, or that they experience symptoms of or test positive for COVID-19, will be entitled to leave under the Massachusetts Emergency Paid Sick Leave Program through April 1, 2022, and will address any issues after that, after that program expires. That's a statewide program. For any of the bargaining unit members who follow the options that minimize their time out of work, so that if they get vaccinated and follow those, those protocols, as I mentioned above, the district will make up the difference between the amounts of pay allowed under the Massachusetts Emergency Paid Sick Leave and the employee's full pay for up to the five full workdays for the 21 to 22 school year. In addition, the district will fund 50 special COVID-19 days for the 21-22 school year, only for those bargaining units who minimize their time out of work, to be administered by the sick leave bank committee. We have a sick leave bank that teachers are eligible for. So this would be to provide support in the event a bargaining unit member tests positive for COVID-19 and is required to quarantine during the school year calendar days, so beyond the five days. Teachers are also permitted for their, the clause in the collective bargaining agreement for days to cover a family illness, they can apply those due to COVID-related daycare closure or an unavoidable quarantine of a child. For employees with absences due to COVID-19 who do not comply with the minimizing their time out of work, for example, they didn't take advantage of vaccination options, they would not receive the additional five-day benefit, and they would just use their sick leave benefits in the current collective bargaining agreement. And also, all members of the association will agree to provide their vaccination status to the district by early December, and is, the vaccination status will be kept, and any exemptions will be kept confidential, with the information stored in an employee's medical file. Also, COVID-19 testing will be available to staff who are determined to be close contacts of a COVID-19 positive individual within Hingham Public School Buildings. And this is if the staff member seeks a COVID-19 test to assure that they are not COVID-19 positive themselves. This is particularly an important benefit for elementary and middle school staff due to the large number of students who were not eligible for the vaccine at the time, and we still are, are getting students vaccinated. It's also agreed that HEA members will be notified by their building administration if a student, staff member, or other person in their teaching or workspace tests positive for COVID-19, and that person's identity will remain confidential to respect their health privacy. For staff meetings and conferences, it was agreed that for any contractually mandated staff meetings, parent, guardian, teacher conferences, or IEP and/or 504 meetings, there will be in-person and remote options outlined in the agreement. And for any special education teachers or psychologists or providers, if any compensatory special education services are required outside of their contractual workday, whether fulfilling from last year or if a student is in a quarantine protocol, that if work needs to be done outside of their contractual workday and agreed upon hourly rate was outlined in the agreement. As we worked through the agreement, the last issue was, we faced the issue of providing appropriate substitute teaching coverage, and we worked mutually on this dilemma. We had to identify steps to mitigate the situation all around. We all understood that the district is experiencing staffing shortage, shortages caused by the pandemic, and we agreed to continue to work collaboratively to provide appropriate staffing for students, as students remain all of our highest priorities. So for just the 21 to 22 school year, it was agreed that, one, if any bargaining unit member would have to lose a contractual preparation time period due to voluntarily covering a class, they shall be paid and agreed upon hourly rate. And also, if a bargaining unit member is removed from a non-teaching duty to cover for an absent teaching, teacher, they would be required to perform, they would not be required to perform the duties commensurate with those of a student, as of a substitute teacher. Also, beginning in January of 2022, bargaining unit members will be using the frontline electronic system to report an absence or, and request a substitute, which is something new for us, or they can still continue to call in and the existing substitute coordinator to arrange for their plans. The district will provide the instructions and the training beginning in December. The frontline system is an app that allows substitute teachers to review openings and sign up for multiple days and receive teaching plans, and having Hingham now using this system, we hope, will be a step in the right direction of securing additional substitute teachers available for our district. And this, this agreement allows us to pilot this program and sort out best practices for moving forward of this system. So it was also agreed we will continue to maintain frequent communications, and we will reconvene as necessary to comply with any applicable state or federal law or regulatory changes, any DESI regulations or guidance, any Department of Public Health or CDC guidance. We're planning a check-in at the end of January, which is the, the end of the first semester, and this agreement will sunset at the end of this school year. So that's, that's all of it.
Great. Thank you, Liza, and Michelle, and Gary, and Susan, and everyone for all your work on, on this. So with all of that being said, I'll take a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, regarding the reopening of schools.
So I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, regarding the reopening of schools for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, and I want to thank the HEA too, for, it was a very collaborative process working through that, and we really appreciate it. Next is approval of minutes of the school committee meeting of November 15, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of November 15.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so minutes are approved. Next is questions and comments, and I see a couple of hands up, and there are currently 73 people on the call now. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed in the meeting. In addition, we've set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wishes to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So the first hand I see is Katie Sutton. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. My name's Katie Sutton, 245 Levitt Street. Tonight, I'm representing the leadership of the Hingham Unity Council, but I'm also the parent of three children who attended the Hingham Public Schools for their entire K-12 education, the last of whom graduated in June. I want to just start off quickly thanking all the school committee members and administration for your service, letting you know, the entire Unity Council leadership appreciates the competing interests and issues that you're dealing with now and always, and we're grateful for everything you do for our kids and our community. We sent a letter last week regarding the recent incidents of racism and ableism in the schools. In the interest of time, I'm not going to be rereading that letter tonight, but it's on our website, hangimmunity.org, for anyone who's interested. Principal Swanson issued a letter to the school community later last week. We thank him for taking the time to explain to those who did not already know what the schools have been doing to address some of the issues we raised. We recognize this work takes time. Change does not happen overnight. We know the school department has faced many challenges over the past couple of years that have made it very difficult to get things done, and we commend the thoughtful work that the district has done already. We also want to acknowledge that the schools do not bear full responsibility for the actions of our students, but until all of our students feel safe in our schools, we have to do better. Beyond the publicly known incidents, community members have come to us, the Unity Council, directly with reports of ongoing series of aggressions directed toward their students in the Hingham Public Schools during school hours, including being consistently called the N-word and various monkey references, both in recent years and this year. And still, there are no clear consequences or policy guidelines laid out to address this type of harmful behavior. Children cannot sit in classrooms and focus and learn if they do not feel safe and supported. Tonight, we want to reiterate an offer we've made many times over the past two and a half years, our help. The HUC has an email list of over 800 individuals. We have dozens, if not hundreds, of active community members who are ready to help in meaningful ways, including an entire committee devoted to schools and education. The HUZ has energy, passion, talent, and resources. We want to see the issues and suggestions made in our letter addressed in a timely manner. We need policies in place now before we lose yet another one of our students to another district or private school or worse, and we want to help you do that. Please consider us a partner. We know you're already doing some great work, and we're here to help you move that progress forward quickly in whatever way we can. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Katie, and thank you for your offer to help. I know the Unity Council will be a good partner, and I think Dr. Masis is going to be discussing some of this later on during the superintendent's update as well. Next is Lynn Vanderhoven.
Hi, Carrie, can you hear me?
Yep. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Linda Vanderhoven, and I live at 15 Hoover Road. Thank you for the opportunity to submit a request for a future agenda item tonight. I'm always hopeful when the agenda is published, and I go and look for an update on the DEI initiative. I'm requesting an update to the community on the implementation of the program that Dr. LaBillaud presented, as well as clear policy guidelines regarding how the district will deal with bias incidents systemically versus what appears to be currently a case-by-case basis under harassment in the handbook. I would also appreciate a timeline or some transparency around the delay. To build on the Unity Council's points, there are hundreds of people eager to help in any way to start to enact change in this town. It's confusing and concerning that a town with the brainpower and resources we have cannot initiate an anti-racist program in the schools. I can no longer ask my children to wait, to sit in school and try to concentrate and learn while hoping they are not the next victims of overt racism. We, as a community, cannot wait for a child to die of suicide or explode in rage as a reaction to constant taunting and public shaming, as we have seen across the country this week. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, Barbie Lynch.
Hi, Barbie Lynch from 3 West Moreland Road. First, my comments are to the public. I think it's important that all the families with children in Hingham Schools understand the newly proposed overnight field trip policies that were, will be discussed later in the agenda, 9.9. Our school committee is setting forth a very overreached medical policy that will not allow any child who is unbacked.
Barbie, Barbie, I'm going to ask you to save that for the agenda item. You're welcome to make a comment when we get to that item.
Happy to, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jamie Downs?
Hi, Carrie, can you hear me? Jamie Downs, 23 Brewster Road. Carrie, I'm hoping you or somebody else on the school committee can provide an update with the efforts to, once again, meet in person and bring back the community to gather in person versus in this method. And to that end, since this is a public meeting, can we, the, the community, get a copy of the attendees who are zooming in? I know you said there's almost 100 people on this call, but I don't ever get to see who's attending, and I'm wondering if that's public record or not. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's a way. I can check and see if there's a way to find the list or down the, load the list. I'm not exactly sure how that works, and there are 74 people on the call right now.
Great.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see any other hands, so we can move on to item six, which is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a number of items to report on this evening, and I'd like to thank Ms. Sutton and Ms. Vanderhoven for their comments earlier regarding a response to the incident that happened almost two weeks ago regarding the, the diversity of our, our students and also racism. And, you know, I think a lot of the comments that I've received from parents via email and even the Hingham Unity Council, the Hingham Disabilities Commission, and even the Hingham CPAC, they bring up some very, very valid points. And one of the things that I want to communicate tonight is the utmost desire of the Hingham Public Schools to work with these organizations to actually take Hingham to a, a different level as far as how issues that were described tonight are addressed. And I think we've done a lot of work in this district. The, the work prior to me coming on, and I've learned a lot about what's happening with that work, but for it to, to be presented and for us to wrap our heads around it is, is one thing, but to actually implement it is another, and to do it with integrity. And that's one of the things that the Hingham Public Schools are positioned to do. They're working to try to create an environment where our students and our staff, anyone who walks through the doors of the Hingham Public Schools feels that they belong. And that's one of the things that I talked to with Dr. LaBillaud and Dr. Darnisa Monti-Jackson. We, we talked last Friday for about half an hour regarding this particular incident, and how do we, as a community, not necessarily rebound from this incident, but how do we absorb what happened, and how do we continue to shape the community so that we can work at this issue? And one of the, one of the, the topics that she discusses, and I've talked to the Hingham Unity Council a lot, this is actually having her doing a, inviting her to do a session for the entire community with the, the topic of belonging, and what's it going to take for a community to open its arms to the belonging of everyone that lives in this community and outside of this community to feel that they're accepted? So, you know, I, I think one of the things that we have realized and learned after this last incident is, you know, we do have things in place. We do have some programs and processes in place, and that's the recent work that has taken, you know, the, the professional development, things of that nature that have, that have happened. But, you know, we need to communicate what we do to our stakeholders of this community, and that's one of the things that we haven't done well, is communicate exactly what our process is, what we do, how we do it. And that is something that we really need to, to ramp up. I'll be introducing later tonight our new communications director. We've talked to her directly about it, and that's, as, as early as today, about how in the future we send information out to our families in the form of a, a monthly update as to what's happening with DEI within our community, within the schools. So I, I think the information that was shared via email with me, our, our families, you know, I, I want you all to know that we take this information extremely seriously. I've had parents relay stories to me of things that they've observed and, and family members that they've experienced certain situations within our schools and within the community that, to them and to us, is troubling. My, my response to that is we have a lot of work to do. I want you all to know that I'm the interim. I understand that. I know that. I know what my responsibilities are, but I can tell you that I am extremely motivated and interested in helping the school committee, the school district, and the next superintendent continue this very important work so that the Hingham Public Schools can make significant progress in this area. I really want to thank the Hingham Unity Council, the Hingham Disabilities Commission, and also the CPAC, as I mentioned before, for reaching out and extending a hand, and I take that very seriously. You have offered support and help. We need to define what that means and how we can actually use your support to actually make this a community-wide effort. I think Katie was extremely eloquent in her comments, and I think she's absolutely right. This is more than just the schools, this is a community effort, and I think we're positioned, and we can be positioned to, can, you know, to work on this. So I just wanted everyone to know that although we have made some progress, we have a lot of work to go, not only from process to procedure to how we communicate, we have a lot of benchmarks that need to be accomplished in the future. And I'm, I'm motivated to support this community and the school committee, the schools, the administration, to actually continue this work. So I just want everyone to know that that's where we're coming from, where I'm coming from. And also, we'll continue this idea of communication, and hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see more and more communication coming out of the district relative to some of the most important crucial things that we're dealing with in this community. So with that, I'd like to move on over to COVID and what we're experiencing in the district. We've had a significant increase in our cases. I'd like to report those tonight. At Hingham High School, we have, for last week, we had one case in a middle school, we had five cases south, we had eight cases, we had seven student cases. We had seven student cases at PRS. We have zero cases at Foster. We had 11 students test positive at East Elementary. And across the district, we have four staff members that tested positive for COVID. We are doing some internal, you know, calls for close contact. And we have a number of students that were either designated to be a close contact and they are still in school because of the test and stay model. In order for a student to be part of the test and stay model, that close contact has to be in school, not out of school. So if they were a close contact to someone outside of school and that's determined through contact tracing, they will have to quarantine at home. If those students were near somebody that were close contact to somebody that was positive and those students were in school and that was during the school, school time, not in the weekend, they can participate in this test and stay. I like to report the combination of test and stay and quarantine students for the district as of last week. At Hingham Middle Tingam High School, we had zero. Hingham Middle School, we had 12. At Plymouth River, we have 137 students that are either in the test and stay protocol or quarantining at home. We had East Elementary, we had 60 students. We have one staff member. At South, we have 105 students. At Foster, we have 11. So that's 325 students and one staff member across the district that are either in the test and stay program that were close contact or quarantine, quarantining at home. So all our, I like to just mention that our nurses across the district are very involved in monitoring this program along with our partner with the Department of Education to be able to have this program in place. But we have noticed a slight increase, well, a significant increase from the first few weeks of school or first couple of months of school just over Thanksgiving break. So I like to also identify that our nurses are identifying that the high, super high majority of these cases are cases that are coming from the weekend and outside of school contact. So this is where the cases are are noticing an increase. So I'd also like to, if we could add Heather Cashman to the panel, I think Heather is on with us tonight. Sherri, could you add Heather to the? I want to introduce her if we could.
If you could raise her hand, I could see her.
Okay, there's, there's a few people out there. So Heather, if you could raise her hand there if she comes. So I just want to go, go ahead and introduce Heather to the school committee and the educational community of of Hingham. Heather is our new communications director for the Hingham Public Schools. She started last Thursday and I had her in my office shortly after she came in. And she worked with me on kind of framing out what we were going to begin as, you know, as far as a structure and and planning for communication for the district. She is working now on our our district website, on Facebook, Twitter. We're even going to going to enter into the space of Instagram. And we're going to be sending out correspondence as to the channels of communication that we will be using across the district. We will be, and you should see in the next couple of weeks, a significant increase in activity coming out of our office and across the district regarding activities and so on. So Heather, I want to introduce you to the community and maybe you could just say hi to everybody.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I appreciate everyone being here and, you know, letting me join you. But yeah, I'm the new media and communication specialist for the district. I'm really excited to get started and share the incredible things that are happening here within the schools. Again, like Gary said, Dr. Masis, it'll be through social media, Facebook, Twitter, and soon Instagram. It'll include, you know, those engaging emails with really important updates, website updates, you know, other communication methods like that. You know, some fun information about me. I received my bachelor's and master's degree from the University of New Hampshire, where I also played for the women's ice hockey team. So fun fact, I like hockey. So if you ever need an ice, if you ever need an icebreaker, talk to me about hockey. So, but my marketing experience is in the private sector, but I'm really excited to bring that to the education field. So anyway, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather, and we're very glad to have you here.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Yes, I'm very, I'm very happy. I think we 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 will definitely see an increase in information that's being sent out to the community. So I'm really excited about that. The last thing I have to report on is I've been talking with the health department here in Hingham and it looks like the health department is going to run a Saturday clinic for vaccination for ages five through 11. As soon as I find out the details on that, it's it's a state program that they are running. It'll it'll be run most likely in one of our schools in the gym. But it won't be run through the school system. It'll be run by the state. And the town health department has applied for this service to come to our community. I'm not sure. I I do believe they've been accepted. But I don't know when that will happen. As soon as we find out, we'll have Heather send out a love correspondence to to the community as to what that looks like and where that will be. But I I did hear that last week. I did talk to Sue Sarnie from the town and it does look like that is is a possibility. So soon as we find out, we'll we'll let you all know. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Moving on to number seven is communications, 7.1 is student communications, and we have Elijah Weberin.
Okay, okay, we're good. Silence, I was worried. So I have a few student developments that will be, actually, no, I'm not going to bring across tonight because we have a meeting with the SAC and this committee a week from tonight, which will be a slightly more effective time to bring those across. But I wanted to talk a little bit about a recent happening at the school, both today and last Friday. Speakers from a company called Core Trainings visited the school for what I understand to be the latest in a series of many similar events for a leadership workshop among student leaders of sports teams, clubs, and all such institutions. I was among those lucky enough to be invited. And I can confidently say that I have never seen such an impassioned and impactful and really relevant workshop coming to the school with the, well, the overarching topic was how can we be better leaders? What stuck out to me most was the specific aspect of what can we be doing to create an environment which is in which others are comfortable, which, you know, has incredible relevance to what we've already discussed here. So from the student perspective, myself and my compatriots on the committee are intending to broaden our accessibility in a manner of speaking, we are going to be working with the unity project and the student council to create a more unified student front through which we hope to more effectively communicate both among the student body and from the student body to all of you, which after all is, you know, why I'm here. And the point of me saying this tonight is really quite simple. It's because the the last bit of the workshop today was the most impactful to me when our attention was drawn to the ever-present creed that, you know, everyone is fighting a battle that we no one else knows about. So I just wanted to share the what our speaker said to us. She said that if you can, always just take 30 seconds to wave to someone to say hello, to do any small thing like that, especially to any students who I don't know who might be at the meeting tonight. We have to take the first few steps. And I'm quite happy to be at the front of it, but I can't do it alone. And it's very exciting to get started and it's unfortunate that it happened in on the heels of such a really awful occurrence. But I hope that going forward, I can work with all of you to really do something that can help. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That's, that's great. And we're, we're looking forward to working with you on this too. It's the students will be, I think, a really driving force.
Absolutely. Thank you, Elijah.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Next is communications received by the superintendent. Do you have anything additional, Gary? You're on mute.
I'll just mention it in in the strategic planning section. That's my next piece, I think.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I just wanted to mention that we did receive a number of communications from the Unity Council, Commission on Disabilities and CPAC, as well as a number of community members regarding the incident last week. And the the themes were they're asking the district to do more and also offering to help. And I think we all agree and we're committed to supporting the equity work that's already underway and anything else we can do to make sure that we move this forward. And we also really want to thank everyone who offered their assistance. The schools are a crucial part of our community, but we don't, they don't exist in a bubble. It's going to take a full-on effort from everybody, from the schools, from the community, from families to ensure that everyone has a sense of belonging in both here in town and in the schools. So one thing I did want to note, the reading through all the emails, there is another common theme. I noticed that the parents are really hungry for resources so that they can have these conversations with their their children in a productive way. So I know there are resources on the Unity Council website, but if there's anything we can do from a school perspective to to connect parents with resources, I think that would be welcome. So I just wanted to mention that. I also wanted to mention that we've received some parent emails from parents asking how they can better participate in discussions with the school committee. And we we understand our our meetings are very formal and there's a strict set of rules and laws that dictate how we have to run them. These are meetings in public, so the public has every right to listen in, but they're not public hearings. The purpose of our meetings are for the committee to get together and conduct our business. And under the open meeting laws, these these meetings are the only opportunity we have to discuss the things that we're responsible for. So we do take public comments as agenda items are discussed, which many school committees don't. But we're hearing that there are people who would like a fuller discussion with school committee members. And we also really value the discussions we have with people and want to hear as many perspectives as possible. So next week, tentatively, the school committee is going to resume office hours, which will take place of resume, something we started last year. And one or two school committee members will host a Zoom call each month. And that'll be a good opportunity to speak to committee members in a more informal setting. We're tentatively looking at the first one for Tuesday, December 14th. But we'll confirm after we finalize the superintendent search schedule because that that has to take precedence. If 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 the 14th will work, we'll find another day. And we'll work probably with Heather to post and make sure we get the information out to families. So anyone who wants to. And I just also wanted to thank Tim for taking on this initiative and making the suggestion that we do this because I think it's, it was really helpful last year and and it'll be a good way to have those conversations. So does anyone else have any communications that they wanted to mention? Nope. Okay, unfinished business. 8.1 is an update on the superintendent search, the screening committee announcement of candidates for consideration by the school committee. So Liza, you can take this one.
Thank you. The screening committee has completed its work and I'm going to read a report from the screening committee to the school committee. We are pleased to report on the activities of the Hingham School District Superintendent Search Screening Committee. The committee was established to assist the school committee in identifying candidates to become the permanent superintendent upon the completion of interim superintendent Dr. Gary Masis's term. Over a period of three weeks this November, the screening committee met on several occasions to understand the search process, formulate insightful questions, review applications, and interview candidates for the position of superintendent of schools. The screening committee reviewed all of the completed applications and subsequently selected a number of candidates who were invited to meet with the screening committee for a preliminary interview. Following the preliminary interviews and after much in-depth discussion and consideration, the screening committee during its meeting on December 1st, 2021, voted to recommend four candidates for for further consideration by the Hingham School Committee. The four candidates listed in alphabetical order are Dr. Margaret Adams, current Assistant Superintendent of the Melrose Public Schools, Dr. Scott Carpenter, current Superintendent of the Monomoy Regional School District, Dr. Jennifer Curtis, current Executive Director of South Shore Stars and former Superintendent of Waymouth Public Schools, and Dr. Andrea Schwab, current Assistant Superintendent of Wareham Public Schools. All candidates meet the requirements for Massachusetts Educator Licenseure for General District District Superintendent. The resumes of each candidate will be posted on the Superintendent Search webpage tomorrow. The screening committee reviewed 20 completed applications and subsequently invited six applicants for preliminary interviews. We enjoyed our conversations with these applicants representing a wide range of experiences and backgrounds. Attached to the report are the questions posed to all candidates. And we thank all of those who expressed an interest in becoming our next school district leader. On behalf of the school committee and the town of Hingham, we would like to thank the 11 members of the screening committee for the many hours they devoted to reviewing applications, interviewing candidates, and deliberating during the preliminary selection process. The conversations were lively, insightful, and courteous. In particular, we want to thank Nathan Tesler, our student representative, for his in-depth research and bringing the student perspective to our discussions, which we did not have in the previous search. It was a pleasure to work with this group of truly dedicated people. The New England School Development Council, known as NASDAQ, advised the screening committee with the interviewing process. NASDAQ will continue to assist the school committee in all remaining steps up to and including selection and contracting with a future superintendent. The next steps in the process, the school committee now assumes control of the superintendent search process and includes the following steps. First, the school committee should accept the report of the screening committee and proceed with the process by interviewing and vetting the candidates recommended. Next, candidates should be invited to visit the district in the near future to meet with stakeholders, including the central office staff, faculty, community members, and students. The school committee should identify dates for this process as soon as possible to allow NASDAQ to schedule each candidate. This then, next, the school committee has scheduled a public meeting on Thursday, December 9th this week at 4:00 PM to discuss the next steps in the search process and NASDAQ will attend the meeting to assist us. The steps include planning the visit to the district, reference checking, planning visits to the candidates' districts, and the interviewing process and more. And updates on the process will be posted on the Hingham Schools website. There's a superintendent search page that's on the school committee web menu. So this is respectfully submitted by myself. I chaired the screening committee and Carrie Ne, the vice chair of the screening committee.
Thank you very much, Liza. And I also want to thank everyone on the screening committee. It was, it was a great process. We really enjoyed working with all of you. And we're excited about the candidates and getting to know more about them. So. So thank you.
So Carrie, we need, can we have a motion to accept the report of the screening committee?
Did you just make that motion?
Or some.
So moved. Okay. We have a second?
I'll second.
You, thank you. All right, all in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness? Carlos?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Thanks again, everyone. Item 8.2 is an update on the strategic plan process.
Hi, good everyone. We are meeting tomorrow with
Hi, good everyone. Uh, we are meeting tomorrow with um, our consultant that will be helping us through the process of the strategic planning. And I will have a full detailed calendar sent out to everyone of what the process will look like and the expected timeline. So we have a, a meeting tomorrow to kind of you know, hone out those dates and also uh, what we need to do for different organizations, support teachers, you know, et cetera, that we can actually formulate our strategic planning committee. So there'll be a number of options for people. We'll have listening sessions in the sense of focus groups. We'll also do a significant survey that will go out and then on top of that, we'll have a committee that will actually be helping to develop the strategic plan. So we'll have all those dates ready, uh, probably shortly after tomorrow. We'll communicate those out to the school committee and then the community at large so that we can begin to publicize those focus group sessions. And also a, a web address where the community can actually log on and, and complete a, a survey. So that'll probably be um, coming out within the next month, I would say, probably after the holidays, we'd see a survey out on the internet for people to, to contribute and also dates for those live sessions. So I look forward to that information.
That's great. Yeah, we're looking forward to it. It's exciting to get moving with that. Does anyone have any questions? Not seeing any. So nine point one is to receive notification of Director of Business and Support Services, John Ferris's intent to retire at the end of the twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Sorry, it's just trying, trying to get you for another year. So a little over a week ago, John notified Gary and me about his intent to retire at the end of the school year, which is also the end of his current contract and we sadly accepted. It's going to be hard to imagine Hingham Public School's central office without John. His enthusiasm and dedication to his work just shines through at every turn. And there's no question that HPS is better off because of it. I mean, he's guided us through several major building projects, including the new HMS and East School, and set us on a great course to ensure that Foster School is on track to become a building that our students and our staff deserve. Uh, additionally, John has guided and continues to successfully guide our school district through the most challenging time for any public schools this century. And it's a huge accomplishment. So we're extremely grateful. We are happy for John and his family as they plan the next phase of their, their journey. Does anyone else want to say anything? Okay, Ness and then Gary and then Michelle.
I am, uh, I'm not letting you go, John. So sorry, I don't accept your resignation. I just wanted to just say how much I, you know, the, the rest of the community might not necessarily see it. I see it because we work together closely on the finance and the sustainability, but, but you do so much for all of us. And there's, there's so much learning on the job that happens when you become a school committee member. And you know, even as an accountant, I, there's, there's the, it's not straightforward. The school financing is not straightforward and you're always just so patient and gracious with your time and explanations. So I really appreciate everything that you've done. I was hoping that um, this day wasn't going to come for another couple of years, but um, you know, completely understand and appreciate you. So I will continue to work with you until we um, say goodbye in June. And then I'll get to see you on the, on the streets of Hingham while we pass each other in our runs. So thank you.
Gary, did you?
Just, uh, yeah, just really quick. Uh, I'd like to, to thank John, you know, for his leadership during my time here. I know we have, we have a few months to go, but I just want John to know that he's, uh, I've, I have seen his impact on the community, educational community in the short time I've been here. He has left a legacy for uh, what his office does for the community. And I think not only the Hingham Public Schools will miss him, but I think Town Hall and um, everyone that supports the schools know who John is. And, and I know that he's not just going to walk away. He'll be around, lives in the community. So he's, he's committed to, to helping Hingham through uh, transition. So we're, we're excited for that.
Yeah, we're counting on him being around. So Michelle, did you?
I did, yes. Um, I was also going to say, I, I'm sorry, I thought this was something we had to vote on and now I'm learning that. Because I would have been an absolute no, you're not accepting it, John. But um, but thank you so much. You, um, you have been a, a force and a steady hand on the wheel of the ship for several years now. We've, we've all been through a lot together from Dr. Gallo's retirement to COVID, to onboarding Dr. Austin, to onboarding Dr. Maestus. And John, you have always been in that corner office with your sharpened pencil, reeling this committee back in when we often are like, come on, John, we can do that. And you, you remind us that there is a budget we must live within. Um, and you have always done it. So as Ness said, patiently and graciously and very wisely. So thank you for your guidance and for your acumen at your role. It's um, will not be an easy role to replace. So we will miss you and we thank you. And we know we still have a lot more work to get through for the rest of the school year. So appreciate all you're going to do for the next six months. And wish you all the best.
And then Carlos?
I just want to echo what my colleagues already said. And John, I, uh, you know, we work together, you know, on capital budgets, uh, contract negotiations and reviewing the overall operating budget. Spend many hours together and you're very unique. You, many people don't know, but you, you don't work nine to five. You are here, ten o'clock at night, working late hours. You're very much appreciated in town uh, by everyone. And uh, it's not over yet. We still have five months to go. So um, we are going to be delivering um, our last budget together. And uh, you know, on behalf of the community, I say thank you very much. Uh, and uh, you know, I hope you do enjoy your retirement, your young man.
Great. Great, Jen?
Thanks, Gary. Uh, John, I just wanted to congratulate you on this retirement news. I know that I am beyond grateful that you stuck with us during two incredible, challenging pandemic years. As I joined the committee, you were always willing to answer any questions I had about school facilities and budgetary items. And I can't thank you enough for everything you've explained to me. I can't think of anyone else who can make bus rental contracts out as interesting as you do. So thank you for uh, the many years you've given this district.
And Liza?
Yeah, I'll just echo everyone, but John, thank you for always having a smile on your face and being friendly and for keeping those candies on your desk because it sustained us through the many meetings and especially negotiations. So we have, we have much time to, fortunately, you're not ditching us right away. But thank you for everything. Um, it's been quite a ride. And we value everything you've done for us. So thank you very much.
I would, I'd just say, you know, thank you all for the kind words. Um, you know, the, 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 uh, there is a lot of work to get done between now and the end of the year and I'm here and I'm engaged and I will be until the very end and presumably even after that, you know, I'm, I'm living in town. I'm not moving anywhere. So I'm going to be here. You know, the whole decision's really, uh, you know, is really kind of bittersweet, you know? With that, uh, you know, it's sort of the yin and yang of, you know, trying to stay intellectually engaged, but then realizing that, you know, you've been doing this for forty-two years when you first got out of college. And you just don't have the energy to keep pace anymore, you know? In many respects, I wish I had the energy of a Doc Gallo, but um, I certainly do not. And I don't think many can or have that type of energy. You know, I, I, I do want to, I appreciate all the kind words about me, but I do want to put in, you know, a little plug for the team that's actually, you know, helped me accomplish or help the district really accomplish all that's been accomplished. You know, and those people were staying in place. They're great leaders in the organization. And you know, I, I think that will continue, the organization continue to nurture them and grow them and will be in great shape. That's Katie Hartman and Doug Foley in Facilities, Patrick Cunningham in Transportation, Kim Smith in Food Services, Jackie Sansone and Kids in Action. And of course, you know, I have to, have to talk about my central office leaders, the ones whom I would have been lost without. You know, they're always there when I can't be. You know, R.J. Wilcox, Nancy Cronin and Karen Toomey. You know, I'll miss working with these people and the rest of central office. I, I, you know, I've told them before that, you know, there's a joy to going into the office every day. And it's really because of the people that work there. So you know, it's a great team and I want to make sure that everybody realizes that it's, it's the team that's accomplishing everything, not an individual. And uh, as I said, I'm here. I appreciate all the kind words. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Gallo is on, she wanted to say something, so we just promoted her to panelists. Dr. Gallo, can you unmute yourself?
No, I'm all set.
Oh, there you go.
Evening, everyone. I didn't really uh, jump on to uh, uh, tonight. There was so many interesting things on the agenda. And this particular item on the agenda is, is not unexpected to me. Certainly over the years, uh, we shared ideas about when we would be uh, uh, moving on from the Hingham Public Schools. But, but John has been amazing. He's one of one, two, three, four uh, Assistant Superintendents, excuse me, Business Directors and Support Services Directors that I worked with during the time I was at Central Office, those twenty-eight years. And, and, and John and I and, and the rest of the team, which has changed over the years, but certainly the team that included John and me and most recently um, Jamie and Suzanne, um, we were a team. And uh, John and I didn't agree on every single thing, but we were a good match for each other. And um, I think that we represented the parts of the, of the jobs that were important to us, but we always could find a good solution for the community, for the kids especially, and, and uh, and, and for all of the professionals in our district. So I'm sorry to see John go. I hope, I was hoping he might change his mind along the way about how long he wanted to stay because as Carlos said, he's a young man. It's all relative, you know, when it gets to be talking about age. But um, but I know John will help out where he can and, and I, I, I sympathize with all of you who, in addition to the many other leadership of decisions you're going to have to make over the next several months, not going to be easy to find another John. Directors of Business and Support Services are, Gary knows this, are hard to come by. And uh, and uh, so um, I, I'd like to be part of that, actually. If, if anyone has any thoughts about what that committee might look like. But, um, but anyway, John, thank you very much for everything you've done for all of us. And, and uh, I wish you well. And I'm sure there'll be celebratory things that will occur later in the spring where we can all say what we really think uh, about John and wish him and, and Beth well. So. Thanks for allowing me to say a few words.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, so we haven't really gotten that far as far as next steps, as far as what the committee will look like. But um, what we really do appreciate John's offer to help facilitate a smooth transition uh, to the next person. So from what I understand, Susan and John and Gary are working on a job description to update that. And we'll post it to school spring as soon as we can. And we're also hopeful that the next superintendent can be involved in the hiring process. We're on a timeline where that, that could work. So, um, so that's what we have. So on to happier agenda item nine point two is to receive the notification of winter coaching recommendations. That's in the packet. I don't know if anyone has any questions or anyone wants to speak to those. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Um, nine point three is to hear a report on the twenty twenty-one MCAS results. And Dr. Jamie, that's you.
So I have to follow that announcement. We've worked together for fifteen years and um, you know how much you mean to me. So it's going to be, anyway, we'll talk about it later. Okay. Um, so, hey, everybody. Good evening. Um, uh, I am very pleased to be here to present an overview of the performance of our students on the twenty twenty-one MCAS from last spring. So while, while momentarily, I'm going to share my screen and um, we'll start that presentation. But I, I, I want to make, actually, let me just get into the presentation and I'll make some notes up from there. The slideshow is about sixty-three slides. However, um, I do not intend on covering every single slide. And when we get into the benchmark comparisons, um, you'll notice that they sort of flow uh, from each grade and each subject area. I'll spend a little bit more time on the major slides that talk about sort of the overall performance. And I'll show you sort of more briefly the um, benchmark slides. So I'm going to share my screen. And I'll begin that presentation. So again, this is the presentation of the district's MCAS results um, from the spring of twenty twenty-one. So there's four parts uh, to the presentation. The first will be overall assessment results, and this will include the results of all students in the district. And then a comparison uh, by grade and by subject area of how our students did in comparison against our twenty benchmark communities. Part two, again, will be assessment results, but this time the focus will be on students who are high needs as well as their, their performance, as well as their performance against, again, the twenty benchmark communities. And finally, part three, uh, the overall assessment results for our students with disabilities and then their performance by grade and subject area as compared against a benchmark communities. And then part four, I'll talk a little bit about uh, the monitoring student learning strategy the district has in place. And this really couples with our conversation from last winter around the impact of COVID on student learning loss. And I'll update you on the steps we're taking to mitigate um, the COVID nineteen pandemic. So just as a preface to the presentation, the administration in the spring of twenty twenty-one was significantly different from previous years in grades three through eight. So we had differences in testing structure, format, question type, session duration, number of sessions. For example, the testing window was extended to mid-June. And as, and rather than taking two sessions, our students took one testing session. The DSE, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is actually not providing any accountability data this year due to these differences. And that there's no accountability information for the district nor for individual schools. So the data contained within this presentation is meant to provide an overview of performance from the spring and really should not be used to compare performance from previous years. The only exception there would be grades. So there was no significant differences in English or math in grade ten for the test the students took. However, there was some slight differences with science, which I'll explain in just a few minutes. So this looks at the assessments that were administered in the district. So really through, from grades three through eight in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and in grade five and eight, Science, Technology, Engineering, they all took that adjusted MCAS. In grade ten ELA, in grade ten math, they took the next generation MCAS, the additional MCAS they would have taken historically. And we did administer grade nine biology um, only to our level two students. And those students took the legacy uh, science assessment. That was done because the competency determination for the current grade ten students in science is, uh, has been adjusted. But the competency determination for last year's ninth graders had not been adjusted. And our level two students are the group that take uh, biology as freshmen, which is why I have a little asterisks there. And on the next slide, when I get into how we did, um, I just want to be thoughtful that that data does not represent the whole cohort. It just represents the students from level two who took it last spring um, as freshmen. So here's part one, assessment results for all students, uh, and then our benchmark comparisons. So overall, uh, Hingham Public Schools uh, outperformed the state uh, in every uh, MCAS administered in spring of twenty twenty-one. In grade, so the way to read this is the left, the first column for grades three, four, or five shows the different subject areas. So grade three reading, grade three math, grade four ELA, et cetera. Then what you see are the percent of students in the district who are meeting or exceeding expectations um, on the uh, next generation MCAS. The old terminology would have been advanced or proficient. The new, uh, next generation terminology is meeting or exceeding expectations. The, uh, we then look at all, so that the first section includes uh, elementary performance. On the right-hand side of the slide at the top, you'll see the middle school performance, so grade six, seven and eight, ELA and math. And I'll note that in grade five and grade eight, you'll also see STE or Science, Technology and Engineering. And our, again, this, the, the, the percent of students who are advanced or proficient compared against the state average. Um, on the bottom left, I should have mentioned this, sorry, you see all grades three to eight for math and for um, English or English Language Arts. Um, and then in the bottom. And then in the bottom right, you'll see grade 10 of the high school performance of grade 10 ELA. Ninety-two percent of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations as compared against 64% of the state. Grade 10 Math, 82% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations as compared against 52% of the state. And in high school Biology, that's at asterisk, it's really grade nine, level two. And last year, the total number of students who took the test was 190. But of that 190, 99% are meeting or exceeding expectations as compared against the state's 67%. So again, this is the result of all students in the entire district. And I'll now compare or show you some comparisons of our students against those 20 benchmark communities. So this is how we can read the slides, so that there's a series of these, which I'll go through a little bit more briskly here. But what you'll notice is where Hingham's performance is in comparison to our benchmark communities is the bold red bar. So for example, in grade three Reading, we were second in our benchmark communities for meeting or exceeding expectations, all students in grade three Reading. This is the chart for grade three Mathematics. Grade four, English Language Arts. Grade four, Mathematics. Grade five, ELA. Grade five, Mathematics. Grade five, Science, Technology, and Engineering. We then move into middle school. So grade six, English Language Arts, we topped our benchmark communities in grade six ELA performance. This is our performance in grade six Mathematics. In grade seven, English Language Arts. Grade seven, Mathematics. Grade eight, English Language Arts, again, topping our benchmark communities. Grade eight, Math. And grade eight, Science, Technology, and Engineering. We then look at our high school performance. This is our performance of grade 10, English Language Arts. And grade 10 Math. We did not do a comparison side for science, given the adjusted N that we administered and not having a sense of the other, the other 19 or 20 communities and sort of where they fall with Biology. So we did not make a comparison there, but we did a comparison across all other subject areas and grades. Now I'd like to turn the committee's attention to the performance of our high needs population. Again, the high needs is a subgroup that the state looks at through MCAS, which includes students who, who have disabilities, who are English language learners, as well as it's, as well as students who are economically disadvantaged. And it's an unduplicated count. So if we have any students who belong in all three of those categories, they're only counted once for this population of students. So again, the district's high needs population outperformed all of our, the state across all areas that were assessed in the spring. Now we'll now go through, this is the summary slide for where our students performed. Hingham, again, the same structure as all students, comparing Hingham's percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations who are high needs compared against the state's percentage of students who are high needs and they're meeting or exceeding expectations. The same slides then repeat for the comparisons with our benchmark communities. And again, we're comparing our benchmarks, communities, same population of high need students. So just like we did compared to all students, to all students, this is comparing our high needs versus everybody else, the other districts' high needs populations as well. This is where our high need students perform for grade three Reading. For grade three Mathematics. Grade four, English Language Arts. Grade four, Mathematics. Grade five, English Language Arts. Grade five, Mathematics. Grade five, Science, Technology, and Engineering. Grade six, English Language Arts. Grade six, Mathematics. Grade seven, ELA. Grade seven, Math. Grade eight, English Language Arts. Grade eight, Math. Grade eight, Science, Technology, and Engineering. Move into the high school now, grade 10, English Language Arts. Grade 10, Math. This next section will provide an overview, similar to what we just heard for all students and high need students, but this time particular focus on students with disabilities. So again, this is the overall performance of our students and the percentage of our students with disabilities who are meeting or exceeding expectations as compared against the state. And the same slides will now repeat again, comparing the benchmark community performance of students with disabilities in Hingham as compared against students with disabilities in our benchmark communities. This is where our students fell compared to our benchmark communities in grade three Reading. Grade three, Mathematics. Grade four, ELA. Grade four, Math. Grade five, ELA. Grade five, Math. Grade five, Science, Technology, and Engineering. Grade six, English Language Arts. Grade six, Math. Grade seven, English Language Arts. Grade seven, Mathematics. Grade eight, ELA. Grade eight, Math. Grade eight, Science, Technology, and Engineering. Then we went to high school, grade 10, English Language Arts. Grade 10, Math. And I think that's it for the, the, the comparison groups. The next part of the presentation is to really give the committee an update and the community an update on the strategy that we're employing to monitor student learning as we enter the 21, 22 school year. We really had a four-phase approach to us working to ensure that we were mitigating learning loss out of COVID-19. The first phase really began in the summer of 2021 with the general support of the Hingham Education Foundation. Coupled with federal funding, we ran a series of acceleration academies in grade K through 12 to, again, give targeted support to students across the district who might have needed it based off of the spring screenings. In, once the, the district's budget was approved and the implementation of the redesign to the Hingham tiered system of academic support was in, was in place, we began hiring and preparing for onboarding of all new specialists and staff as well as diagnostic data analysis and planning from this, the preliminary MCAS results heading into the opening of the school year. In phase two, this fall, we really have been working to understand the difference between acceleration versus remediation. As you know, the state has released an acceleration plan to accelerate student learning rather than working to go back and remediate. We also launched our, our Hingham tiered system of academic support, both with our screenings and then with continued interventions being provided around about the first week of October, it really kicked off. We also began, once again, screening our students relative to social and emotional learning. What we are learning as this school year is reopening is, we really have a lot of work to do to ensure that our students are emotionally ready to learn, particularly coming off of some trauma experiences through the COVID-19 pandemic and their return to school. In phase three, really winter into the spring, we'll be looking to continue interventions for all students. We'll also be looking at type, diagnostic testing, and targeted instruction. I'll be back to the committee probably in February to give you a more formal update. If you remember from last winter, I provided an analysis of the differences in student skill level from pre-pandemic to pandemic year. And by the winter, we will have completed the first screening where we would have provided intervention through the fall to hopefully impact the winter screening. So probably I talked with Carrie about it and the team, probably early February, late January, we'll be able to have that data and come back and give the committee an update. But targeted instruction will continue as well as analysis of the mid-year screenings to provide the candidate update on the learning loss mitigation strategy. And finally, in phase four, really to the spring into the summer, looking at year one implementation of the Hingham tiered system of academic support, looking at the onboarding of all of our new folks, and really reflecting on the extent to which our students showed gain. We will, once again, hopefully be offering a series of summer academies for student learning to accelerate students heading into the next year, as well as begin action planning for, for strategies to implement for the 22, 23 academic year to ensure that our focus remains strong on regaining skill. What I will also mention here is the other piece that's in, sort of embedded in here is really year one implementation of HTSS and ensuring that we are as responsive as possible to the population of students in front of us. So there'll be a lot of work going on as we go into year one implementation. The team is going to be meeting actually next week to, to meet formally with the, with our new specialists and our principals, our content directors to sort of talk about what's working, what's not working, what do we need to adjust so that we can be prepared for year two implementation come the fall. In terms of next steps, so we are continuing to support the full return to in-person looning, I'm sorry, learning, really focusing with our students on routines, classroom structures. For some of our students, they had not really experienced a full year of school in almost three years. So that return in teaching routines took primarily, primary importance as we returned to school. Again, year one implementation of HTSS academic structures, student screenings, interventions, and monitoring. The other thing that cannot be understated is the social, emotional health and wellness of all of our students. The reality is we are experiencing a, an increase in students, students requiring social, emotional interventions and support, more so than we would have anticipated based on this, how students presented in the spring. That has made the day-to-day operations and functions of our building, buildings, really the top priority of the district. The, we are here to serve the students who go to school with us every single day. And our attention often will go to the smooth operations of the building on any given day to ensure that our students are being supported to the maximum extent possible. And that really connects back to the earlier discussion, the comments from Katie, the comments from Lynn, the statements from Gary, the feedback from our student representative. We are taking student belonging incredibly important, particularly heading back to school following such a traumatic experience for most of our students. Belonging and re-establishing school as a connected community is taking a top priority for us here in the Hingham Public Schools. We recognize the importance of belonging, not only for psychological safety, but for social, emotional health and wellness. Kids are not available to learn if they are worried about being singled out or being targeted. The progress there is slow, but there is progress. The work right now is on building competency across all levels of the district to ensure that the work that we're doing and the changes that we're making are sustainable, thoughtful, and focused on student success. So with that, I'll come out of the share screen and I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the committee or from the public about anything that was presented this evening.
Yeah, no, thank you for putting that together. That's, Tim has hand up.
I just wonder if we ever get, I know they're not in this round of data, but if, do we get data on the retest MCAS?
There is no more. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. So there is no formal presentation back to the committee on the retest results?
Because I'm just looking at the 15% of 10th graders with disabilities who pass the Math MCAS. I assume most of those students eventually will pass the MCAS. I don't know if we have, do we have numbers of kids who are, don't get a diploma because of the MCAS? Because they're unable to pass?
So as of now, Tim, we've not had any students not attain a diploma because of MCAS. So there are plenty of opportunities.
Not a concern.
And I, no, and I also will mention that Mr. Jewitt and the Math Department Director through the SRT three grant, will be putting in an algebra support program to support all students in achieving success in algebra.
Liza?
Thank you. Jamie, was there any, I mean, this is such an unusual data set that we've never seen. Were there any unexpected positives or declines that came out?
So that's a great question, Liza. I didn't include all of the slides in the presentation because it would have been another slide for every grade and every subgroup. But what we did look at is we looked at the trend performance, so the proportion of kids who were exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, not meeting expectations from eight, from 2018, 19, and then 2021. And the good news, what I think really is that one of the key takeaways, I should have made a bigger deal of it in the presentation, but we saw the same performance trends from, from pandemic year to pre-pandemic year. So I can pull up some examples and show you what I mean, but that the same proportion of kids, a couple percentage points different. But for the most part, our students maintained the skill from, or the performance levels, I should say, from pre-pandemic. So we did not see any significant drops in student performance post-pandemic. As compared to pre-pandemic.
And, and no, okay. So it was pretty status quo.
We were actually, now, I don't want to be misunderstood with my next comment, but we were on the most part pleased that we didn't see such a regression in performance as we may have been anticipating based off the study from last January. We looked at the skill gaps that we were seeing on district-determined or district-administered screening tools. But that said, the, the, the good news for us is the students actually maintained it and in some places actually grew a bit in their performance. We still have those achievement gaps relative to our high need students and our students with disabilities are doing. So I don't want to be misunderstood there. But overall, I think we may have been anticipating a bigger drop and we did not observe that as compared to pre-pandemic's performance.
Great, but I, I acknowledge that we still have challenges, especially with the social, emotional of getting people used to being in school. So thank you for addressing that and staying on top of it.
Nice. Hey, thanks for the presentation and the update. I, the trend that I was noticing for the high needs and special ed students was that it looked like in grades eight and six, they, compared to our benchmark towns, they actually performed really well. And I'm wondering if that's related to the, you know, the lab that was added to the middle school? Or if you could have any like themes coming out of those, that data set? Just so we can learn from that and figure out what's, what might be working and try and continue that.
Yeah, um, we tried to take it, and I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to be misunderstood to say that we didn't go as deep as we usually do, but we didn't do the same error analysis and question analysis as we typically do. So the committee, in a typical year, you would have seen those presentations and after every grade, I would have given you the strengths and the weaknesses for each of the areas that we looked at and what we're working on to begin to remedy those areas of weakness. What's different this year, Ness, is the, the substantive difference in the type of tests and the structures the kids took. It was in such an atypical year. As you know, we did the first 10 days for training. We had a period of time that was remote. We were in hybrid learning for most of the year for, for return by the, by the spring. So we didn't feel it was a true representation of what our kids could do, which is why the preface really stated, this is to be taken as a snapshot of how we performed in the spring of 21 and really not for comparison beyond that. Now, that's not to say our directors had not been working to unpack the results with our faculty, but at a high level, I'm not, I don't really have the, the backup to say, here's why I think we did the way we did. We were sort of taking it at face value. We were looking more holistically on, did we maintain? Did we see any significance? Liza's really a question. Did we see any significant drops or significant improvements? And actually, what we found was status quo maintenance for performance levels pre to post. That really, we're usually using district measures to track, to track students' progress more carefully. So when I'm back in January or February, I'll be able to speak to you with more certainty around the areas of skill gaps that we're still observing or the ones that we've been able to address. And I will note that we do our director, so I, that, that presentation was put together with the support of Mary Andrews, our Director of English Language Arts for the district. David Jewitt, our Director of Mathematics for the district, and Katie Roberts, our Director of Science for the district, and they're also on the call. So in case they, they may have sort of additional insights for you, but at this level, I'm not really ready to make any hypotheses around why they did the way they did. Again, that's not to say we don't understand it. It's just that we didn't dig as deep as we typically do because it was such an unusual year. And I don't want to base this year's instruction And I don't want to base this year's instruction on this program.
Okay, thanks.
So to, to that point, David Jewett is on the call and he had his hand up, so I just promoted him to panelist so he can join.
Hey, Dave.
I don't think he's on quite yet. But it's good timing. So looking at it, it, it shows just what we saw last, for past years, that there is still that gap between like all Hingham students and then the students with disabilities and, and high need students that's persisting and it's, that's not something that'll be fixed in a year. But, but you know, the, the tiered system of supports that we, we, we all supported last year should hopefully help with that. I did note the math performance for both kids with disabilities and high need students was, is still concerning. I think that's been an issue for, for a while. So, and I, you may not be ready to talk about this tonight, but at some point, if there are any ideas on how, how we're going to address that. And then the other thing I kind of noticed is for students with disabilities, especially Carlisle did really well. And do you know, is, do you know why, like, if they're doing something that like they were, it wasn't just us, like they were, you know, above on a lot of categories, a lot of towns. Has, has anyone reached out to them to see how they're, what they're doing and why they have such good results on this?
We have not, no.
Okay.
We certainly can. We do have a connection with Conquer Carlisle. Again, the, the year that that was assessing, for all those things already said, but we certainly can look more into what was going on in Carlisle. That's fair.
Right. Yeah, no, I was curious about that. I don't know if Dave was able to join us.
Yeah, he's there.
I'm here, Kerry. I put my hand up when Tim, Tim had asked this question about the high school students in particular. I just wanted to, I jumped right at that bit because I know Jamie actually has heard me say it enough that he was able to basically replicate it. We haven't had a student not pass the high school MCAS in 20 years and not graduate because of that. Students who don't pass it on the first time do individual tutoring with me throughout, and also I scheduled to meet with them during their study halls, sometimes during math time, sometimes before and after school to get them to a place where they need to be. That's usually, oh, you know, in a typical year, it is typically zero to five students that were, you know, coming off of the spring and then dealing with through the fall to kind of get them through that makeup exam. So that's a point of pride for us for sure. And we continue to work very hard to make sure that that happens. Additionally, last year with the 10th grade, Jamie mentioned the grant for the funding that he's taking out of SRT funds this year. Dr. Venice and I team up a lot and share. She generously shares some resources so that we can run an algebra one support class and an MCAS support class. Algebra one, again, typically the test is new now, but typically traditionally being 70% of the MCAS for 10th grade. And obviously that's the one that matters. So that's an after-school class that we've been able to run for, also since I think we've been running that since about 2010 or 11 and really helps some of our students, you know, narrow in and focus on the test itself at that time. So we didn't run that last year as well. So something that will, we're very, very happy to have back into place this year.
Thank you.
Many years of nobody being denied a diploma because of MCAS is a pretty impressive statistic, so.
We're, we're very, very, very proud of it. Thank you.
And Mary Andrews just joined us too. Welcome.
Hi, whenever math has to talk, I do need to chime in. So I just wanted to clarify a few of the same things. I think sometimes when we look at the meeting and exceeding expectations, which is obviously a really important figure to consider. It implies that what's going on for the rest is that maybe there's failing or, or not meeting. And so for an example, I think back to Liza's question of any place where we did see a significant leap. The, at the high school this year, we, we really actually did see, we were at 90% exceeding and meeting combined in 2019. And this year we went up to 92% exceeding and meeting combined. And I think what's interesting about that is especially for us. This year we jumped from 30% in 2019 to exceeding up to 43% exceeding expectations. So we have almost an even split with exceeding and meeting and that, that's a pretty high. We were joking that we're going to get sweatshirts that say, Hingham English, we exceed and excel at a pandemic. But the 8% that's unaccounted for for our 92 is all partially meeting. There were no, no meetings and I feel lucky, I'm knocking on all the wood here to say that there hasn't been any not meeting on the first try for English since before I was director. So we've been, I'd like to say we're really fortunate there. It's obviously the, the hard work of these teachers, especially last year when, when everything was against all of us in education. So I think that's important. Another thing that I would add, because some of you on the call might be wondering if there was no 11th grade MCAS last year, why did my 11th grader take MCAS? And we had 110 11th graders opt to take the legacy version of the test. It was waived for compensation determination for 2022. But we had 110 decide to take it because they wanted to look at being eligible for the Adams Scholarship and the SEAL of Bili literacy. So over that 110 of the junior class who did take it, again, they were the legacy benchmarks. So we had 106 who achieved an advanced rating and four students who achieved a proficient rating. And we have a few more that just opted to take it in November who wanted to jump on that SEAL of Bili literacy train. I think, so, you know, getting back to that 10th grade number, and that's the one that Dave and I are so intimately familiar with, because obviously we have to go through every child's scores and make sure they have what they need to have to graduate. When we're looking, so when we look at special needs, population, students with disabilities, we had 27. And that's in the district for 10th grade. So ish, it was probably 25 ish who, who took it out of our 323 total because there are a few out of district placements. I'm, I'm not sure of the exact number in 10th grade, but so if we look at 41% being in exceeded, I just think attaching a real N is important when we look at these bars. And so if we look at exceeding and meeting expectations, and we had 41% in 10th grade student with disabilities, that comes out to about 10 ish who were also in the meeting exceeding crew with their peers and then 15 ish total who would have been in the partially meeting category. And so, you know, we've been 15 out of the 323, which accounts for 5% of our 8% of students who were impartially met and the other 3% would have come from the general ed population. So I, I just think that sort of a discussion is, is, is important to get a bigger picture of how that shakes out. So there's that.
And I'll add one more thing on top of Mary's good comments there. So when Jamie mentioned that we didn't sort of draw out that strengths and weaknesses, it wasn't for lack of trying. But the fact of the matter is students were graded differently on the exams, right? Half of the sixth grade was graded on questions one through 10 and 20 through 30, and the other half was graded on 11 through 20 and, well, I'm doing the numbers wrong, but you get it. They were graded on different actual questions and then we also weren't really given a lot of the questions. And that, that's been a difficult part of the new MCAS process. They're not releasing as many questions as they used to. And we obviously don't have that, just the bank of institutional knowledge to fall back on knowing exactly what a question would have been on a specific test based on the standard. So when we went looking, you know, you're, you're also just dealing with data fields that were much, much smaller. So just so you know that it wasn't for a lack of trying and we didn't just say, oh, well, you know, Jamie said we're going to take it at face value, which we, we did. And that was important to do this year, but it also wasn't for lack of trying. We went in and looked at it and it was really hard to glean consistent patterns that we would see in a typical year.
And I guess along those same lines, I think that the biggest thing that points to that for parents is on the parent report this year. You would have noticed if you had a child in third grade through eighth grade, typically that dotted bar line they give you to say, oh, if your student took the test 10 times, your score would fall in this range. It's usually a pretty tight range. But this year for grades three through eight, it's a wider dotted line range because they're admitting that we don't have the preciseness of the data that we usually have to estimate how a child would do if they took the test multiple times because they only took half a test. And they didn't take the same test their peers took necessarily. They were randomly assigned session one or session two. Plus there were also questions on those tests that were matrix questions where the state is vetting questions for, to be used for future tests. So they were questions that didn't count. So it, it was a strange, a strange year for three to eight, for sure.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? And I don't see any in the public. So I just want to thank Jamie, you for putting the report together. And then the directors for all your work on it too, and, and the staff. I mean, the fact that we did as well as we did is, it speaks volumes as far as the quality of, of our teachers and, and the instruction that was provided. And then as far as the, you know, the gaps, we'll keep working on that. So keeps doing every week, everything we can do from a school committee perspective to support that work. So. Thank you. All right. So next, we have three field trips to approve. One is a Hingham High School crew training trip to Florida in February and then two ice hockey field trips. So I'm assuming that Coach Hughes on the call to talk about that.
Thank you. I do believe that I see Sonya Claridge, the president of HHSRA with us in this group. It's an interesting situation where HHSRA is between seasons that we sponsor for this particular field trip. I do have the information, but I just wanted to.
I'm promoting her to panelist too.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Jim, for the introduction. Hi, everyone. So Hingham High Crew has just come out of the fall season. We're straight into winter training. And this Florida training trip is at the end of winter, right before spring. And the idea is that the team gets a chance to row on flat, non-trail, non-hurricane exposed harbor twice a day for between four and five days to, you know, integrate their winter training to prepare for the spring season. So we're currently ranked number three in Massachusetts Public School Rowing Association. And obviously this, you know, a trip like this hasn't happened for a number of years. We have huge support from the athletic department, from Jim Quattramoni and Marianne Holler with coach and captain mentorship and the bus transport to the regattas. We take up a lot of space. We can fill four buses to a regatta. There's 110 athletes. So not all of them will be going because some of them obviously play. It's a, you know, optional thing. So does anyone have any questions or Hingham High School Rowing Association is independent to the Hingham Public Schools, but we work in alliance with the, all the Hingham High School protocols and Massachusetts Athletic Association rules.
Great. Um, thank you. And I just promoted Marika Cup as well. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I want to introduce myself. I'm Marika Cup. I'm the program director and the girls head coach for Hingham Crew. I started with the program in fall 2019. And we are looking at this training trip as a way to elevate our program, just like Sonia explained. Even with great conditions, it will be difficult for us to get on the water in March. So this is a really great opportunity for our athletes. We are likely going to open up the opportunity to all of our athletes. We will prioritize varsity athletes. And the benefit of the Stetson University as a location for us to host the training trip is that it's it's like a one and done trip where you offer, they offer their training facilities, rowing boats, launches for the coaches, university dining hall catering, and then we would have space for approximately 50 teammates, coaches and, and parent chaperones. So it's really great. I attended UMass and I rode for the UMass rowing team and that's where we did our training trip every year. So I'm familiar with the location and the coaching staff down there. So that's great. And like Sonia said, it's just an opportunity to get out and great team bonding. We're number three out of public schools, but I want to be number one. So obviously the competitive advantage of getting on the water is really great. And then as well as myself, we have a coaching staff, a, other coaches that are interested in attending and, and leading training down there. So we are really excited about the possibility.
Okay. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
I have a few, Kerry, sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, Michelle and Liza.
I have a couple, sorry. And it's, and they, it's not necessarily related to just the crew request. It's actually reflective of all of the requests. So anyone can answer or say, we don't know. Are there, but my direct question, my actual questions are, are there, are there any requirements for vaccines for these trainings, like the, I guess is one in particular. So does, is the place requiring rowers to be vaccinated? And I guess my broader question is, and this again is for all the field trips. What are the, what is our protocol going to be if someone contracts COVID on one of these trips? Like, how are we going to get that student back home? So are there, and so in this particular one, I'm wondering, are there any vaccine or testing requirements for the athletes?
There's no direct, I've already asked that question with the university and they're not requiring any COVID vaccination status. But as you know, our rates and attendance at the Hingham High School is, you know, requiring vaccination. The protocols would be followed just as they're laid out within Hingham High School. You know, the isolation. It'd be the same as anyone going on any trip anywhere.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. I, I guess my, my quest, my thought is. With you in particular, but I'm thinking like, wait a second, if somebody is on the trip, how are we getting them back home? But thank you. That is helpful clarification. I mean, I do think this is a great, a great opportunity for, for the student athlete. So I want to, you know, figure out a way.
Great question. And I also asked, will the airlines have their protocols to, to get on and off? So we've, we've asked about those, but it's, it's a reality.
Unfortunately, yes.
Michelle, I would work, despite the fact that between seasons, I would work with Sonya and Coach Cop, just to make sure that they had latest protocols in place.
Hey, Liza?
Yeah, I guess my question and comment is related to what Michelle just raised. We are, this school committee has been talking about overnight field trips and requiring vaccinations on them. And we're going to share our first reading of policy later. And I will note that the Massachusetts government, public health, the COVID-19 travel recommendations are currently, if you are fully vaccinated, you can resume pre-pandemic activities, including travel within the United States. And so in keeping with even Massachusetts guidelines and as we approved on other field trips, of the requirement of a vaccination to go on the trip as being fully safe and also of protecting everyone when they are in, in the location that they're going to as well as preventative for coming back and being able to stay in school when they get back. So you know, I, I am going to be consistent about my request for an overnight field trip of having that requirement. I think it's in the best interest of all the students and it's keeping with state regulations. And particularly it's in keeping with the latest news of new variants, which it's unknown what's happening. And our governor and the president recommending vaccinations for everyone. So it's, for me, it's in the best interest. in the best interest of everyone and for keeping your team healthy so that they can come back for the spring and keep training and achieve the goals you want them to achieve. So, and I would say that comment goes for the hockey teams as well. Because it's in the best interest of their team being healthy for the full season as well.
Does anyone else?
Agree. Yeah, it's, it's all logical and it's like, it's a continuing concern and reality. Yeah.
Yeah. Is anyone else have any questions on the committee? Well, I would just note that for, as Liza said, we are looking at a policy for overnight field trips during COVID. And I think if this is approved, it would be subject to that policy. Do you have any sense of the vaccination rates on your team?
I, my estimation would be that it would be in excess of 90%.
Okay. Yeah, it's not something that we ask the athletes directly, just because, you know, I don't know if that's my right as their coach. But it is something that we take really seriously. And I think, you know, as much as they're sick of, of COVID protocols as we all are and wearing masks, like especially while working out, we all take it really, really seriously. And I think you know, whatever the board decides the restrictions to be, we would definitely fall in line with that, with the guidance of Jim. We want to keep our athletes healthy. That's who they are as people. That's our number one focus. So taking care of them is really important.
Yeah. And I will just say that I heard last year that the crew team was especially good at making sure that the kids are safe and follow the, the protocols. So we definitely appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah.
Just in the spirit of being consistent, I think on other trips, we always ask, there's a $2,000 price tag for the trip. Is there a system so giving the $2,000 might be an opportunity to go as well? I don't know if there's.
It was a little. Were you asking about, it just faded out a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking about the price of students were going to, if students who couldn't come up with 2,000, the $2,000 price tag. If there were any scholarships or opportunities for them to earn, get the money for the trip in other ways.
So, yes, we, our policy is an inclusive policy. We funded 14 students this year, spring, fall, and winter to the value of $12,000. And that's out of our own, you know, obviously, our athletes pay to row. And we fundraise, so we use that money. And so, yes, definitely, we, if, if we, if everything lines up and we go, then, yes, obviously, we'd fund students and families who need that support. Yep.
That's great. Okay. I see two hands up for members of the public. And I just want to note, if you're, if you want to speak to this particular crew trip, we can do that now. If you're talking more generally about vaccine requirements for field trips, we're going to do that for a couple agenda items down. So I'm going to allow Kristy Kondraki. Kristy? Okay, I think she might be for the, for the overall policy. Let's see. So I'm going to take her off. Ryan Lynch, did you want to speak to this trip or do, or about the, the field trip policy generally?
I just want to speak to a comment that was made that it's a, just to clarify, it is a recommendation by the government. It is not a requirement or a guideline. It's simply a recommendation. So I just wanted that to be clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the proposed Hingham High School crew training trip to Florida to take place February, during February break 2022. Sorry, the dates aren't on there. Subject to the policy to be determined over, subject to following all Hingham Public Schools overnight travel policies.
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness? Carlos?
Hi.
Kim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Hopefully, everything lines up and you have a fabulous trip.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Okay.
Thanks to both of you for what you do with that program. It's tremendous.
Really is. Okay, so next is to hear a proposed overnight trip to Vermont for the girls varsity ice hockey team in December 2021 and act as appropriate.
You have, you have the details in front of you on the itinerary of the trip. This is the fifth year of this particular trip for the girls program and the sixth year for the boys program, if you want to take them together. The, the both trips will be paid for by fundraising activities. Both coaches have systems in place that once they get to the hotel after they get the last game that day, student athletes won't be leaving the hotel. The vast majority on both sides upwards into the 80% number will have parents that will be in attendance as well at the, at the events in Vermont and New Hampshire.
Michelle, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, I just same question as the other one. Did just any idea of what the protocols are for those two tournaments? Testing, vaccines required, you know?
There is no, there are no testing or vaccine requirements at, at either of the tournaments, but we will be following all, all guidelines that we would need to follow if we were in Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, so this one, these two are coming up very quickly. So they're next week, correct?
End of the week, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so what do people want to do? Do, and make a motion?
Yes, you're right, because we.
I just want to clarify because the, the policy that we're going to be reviewing, it's just the first read, so.
Right, exactly. Do you have any sense of vaccination rates of these teams, Jim?
So we don't, we don't ask specifically if student athletes are vaccinated, but the approach is, especially with hockey, with, you know, the things that happened with club and youth hockey last year, I think that the high school level hockey got maybe an undeserved bad name in that process. But what we talk about is that to avoid disruptions, both individually and as a team, being vaccinated is, is the best option. And then we also, as a member of the board of directors, the MIA agreed that a building that might be hosting tournament games that does have vaccination requirements, that we would not be seeking alternative venues as a result of that requirement. So just getting the point home to student athletes that potentially, when they get to a big game, if they, if they're, if they are unvaccinated, they wouldn't be able to enter that building. So those are the two strategies that we're working with right now. The, anecdotally, the, it's extremely high. It's extremely high in terms of percentage on both, on both teams.
Okay. Ness?
What if we were to, instead of requiring vaccination, propose to have people tested before they go, similar to what you would do if you were going to the theater?
That might make sense. So like a PCR test 72 hours in advance, something like that. What, Jim or Gary, what are your thoughts on something, doing something like that?
I'll comment. That, that seems to be in line with what a lot of, a lot of these districts are going with in terms of trips and organizations that actually put on a lot of these excursions for, for schools is that they're leaving, leaving it up to the school district, but they are you know, requesting that, that districts, if, if a child isn't vaccinated, that they do have that PCR test prior to, prior to departure within the timeline, I think it's 24 hours.
Okay, would people be comfortable with that? Liza?
I could be comfortable with that considering this is a one night trip. But I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that on a multi-day trip. I mean, this is like, they're going for, right, for two days, one night. Because, so at least we know. And, you know, if 2020 hindsight, we would have had this all decided a while ago, but this is a one night, it's a short time, but I would have to think about doing that for a multi-day trip because you don't have the same protections if people are gone for longer than that. And considering that there is a understanding that we have a quite high participation rate of vaccination already with this group. But I I do feel strongly that we're, we're having people go as groups and in closed spaces and I'd prefer we know their vaccination rate, but I understand the interest of keeping life going, but I also have a concern of risks. So I can't give you a full answer, but, but I think that this is a one night, I might be able to go with that.
How does everyone else?
I, to, to be honest, I'm more comfortable with kids going on an overnight trip to New Hampshire and Vermont, unvaccinated than being a part of, you can opt out of a trip to New Hampshire, Vermont, you can't opt out of regular school. So I actually feel like parents might probably understand the risks for their kids. And I'd be comfortable saying just a PCR test for the overnight trip.
Okay.
Do we? Ben, sorry, I don't want to overcomplicate this again. This is just because we want to get so many, you know, we want to get back to normal as we can. And we know that these are amazing opportunities for the athletes. So we want them to be able to participate. But we also want them to be able to come back, not be sick, not get others sick, and be able to continue going to school. So I'm just wondering, so are we thinking testing just going, or are we thinking a test when they come back as well?
Jen?
Um, so Michelle, I just want to, we, in our policy discussions, we discovered that you're only allowed to test.
She took, is it going to be, is it going to be once every 72 hours or something? Is that the?
No, I, I think what she was going to say is we can't test, we can't require that coming back to school.
On, we have the test and stay for, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Did you?
We didn't hear you, Jen.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Did Carrie, did Carrie?
Kind, kind of.
Explain that. Yeah, we can't require them to test, we can't require them to test after their return.
Liza?
But Jen, that was, we were talking about if families went away, we can't require the student.
True, yeah. Coming back. Vacation, after vacation or school vacation too, those weeks.
Right.
Very good point, very good point, Liza.
This is, this is a school authorized program.
It wouldn't be considered, it wouldn't be considered a vacation. So, yeah, you're correct.
They get their return test in school on their first day back at school? Like, doing the test and stay? I don't know if they'd even be eligible for that.
I believe vaccinated people aren't, can't participate in sex, in stay because there are too many false positives. So that wouldn't be an option.
Well, actually then, would that, could we say, if you're not vaccinated, you're required to sign up for test and say, and, and test when you return? When you, before you leave and when you return?
I was just thinking that might make it more convenient for families if they didn't have to go iPCR test if they get.
Well, or they could provide their own test, or they could sign up for test and stay and if, and then that's if they're not vaccinated.
Is this considered a school sponsored event so that they would be part of the test and stay? Because if you if you're, if it, if it happens, if the close contact happens outside of school, then the kids are not part of the test and stay and they have to quarantine for the 10 days or the 10 to 14 days.
And if it's not a school sponsored trip, why are we talking about it?
I think it is a school sponsored trip.
Of course, it's a school sponsored trip.
Yeah, so it would fall, so that would, it would be eligible for test and stay.
Right, and vaccinate. Sorry, my, I'm just shutting my camera off because.
Technically, it technically, it is a school sponsored trip and it would qualify for test and stay. And I think Dr. Lobello, I might have a, I think he has, was have the same opinion because the test and stay program is for school sponsored events, weekday and weekend. The minute it is no longer a school sponsored event, the test and stay program connection is broken. So it does, with that definition, I think it, it would cover for the test and stay model.
The only thing I would add, Garrett, and you're, you're right, it does. But to clarify, the reason is because under school, under the, under the school's purview, we have a controlled environment. Right? So there's hand washing, there's ongoing testing, there's mask wearing. That's why outside events aren't covered is because the, we have no control, right, over, over the protocols and the procedures and the safety precautions. So I think if, when the team travels, right, or the, under the auspices of the committee's policies, if it adheres to all of the requirements that they would have if they were in school, then they're covered under test and stay.
Okay. So it sounds like what we're saying is we would approve these trips, provided that unvaccinated members of the team participate in test and stay before they leave and when they get back? Is that what I'm hearing?
So test and stay, I'm sorry, so the test, we don't so I don't want to confuse it, but we don't proactively test kids under test and stay. Test and stay kicks in if they have been a close contact. Right?
I see. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's, it keeps the kids in school rather than having to quarantine.
Got it.
It's not a proactive.
Okay. Yeah.
So you would be asking the families to have them get tested before they go. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that. And then Michelle had raised the possibility of having them tested on their reentry, too. Liza?
So, so Jamie, then, in test and stay also would test them if they developed symptoms, too, correct? So and so if they were determined to be a close contact while they're at the event, say another team, somebody tested positive, so then they would be a close contact theoretically. Or if they returned and they developed symptoms, then they could be tested under the test and stay.
So that's when they get tested, correct?
Right, which and also theoretically, if you are infected, it takes a couple of days to even sometimes show up in your system anyway. So yeah, I mean, then they, if on, upon their return, it's probably even more likely they would test a couple of days. Or if they tested the day they got back, it might not even show up right away if they were exposed. So they're better off being in the test and stay program because if they were determined to be a close contact, which might be a couple of days later, or if they develop symptoms, then they could be tested. If they develop symptoms, then they could be tested.
So what we'd have to check into is. Um, right now, under the district's testing program, um, high school kids who are unvaccinated can do test and stay. The um, the rapid antigen. Um with people who are vaccinated shows a higher potential. For, so it's really around this, they'd have to actually have the symptom all, to Liza's point, they'd have to actually be exhibiting symptoms. And if they were close contacts, they actually don't, my understanding is they don't test unless they're um exhibiting symptoms.
No, we're talking about an unvaccinated.
That's fair.
Person, yeah.
But I just want to make sure everybody understood the, the nuanced difference there with the vaccinated, for the people that are listening.
Okay, um. Tim?
It seems to me, I mean, from my viewpoint, I would prioritize testing on the return. Which they could do on the 13th, which would be a couple of days after the trip. Uh, just, I mean, I'm, my main concern is Hingham Public Schools and keeping Hingham Public Schools open and. Progressing towards being, you know, getting our vaccination rates up so we can be mask free and get back to normal and all of that. I think parents might be more willing to take on that risk for the pretest if their kids might get. Exposed on the trip, where if they're coming home, the parents of Hingham, general Hingham Public School students aren't. They're not taking that risk. Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Upon return, I guess I'm not that concerned about testing before they leave for the trip, because I think parents can mitigate that concern.
I thought that for a second too, but then I was like, wait a second. And sorry, I mean, this is just such the rabbit hole, we go down every time this COVID started, right? But what if 10 kids test positive from Hingham Public Schools before they go? And then Jim is probably having a different conversation with the hockey team about, guys, you can't go, 10 out of 25 be tested positive, we're not, we, we can't go to this. And you're stopping it spreading to the rest of the Hingham Public School kids who are taking a bus, Jim, are they taking a bus?
Yes.
And sharing a hotel, and sharing hotel rooms.
They get really sick, they, they are COVID positive and they're really sick and they're away from their homes. And how do we?
But, but if they're only in New Hampshire and Vermont, their families can go and pick them up, which is unlike Florida.
And most of the families go, Jim said.
And most of the, most will have at least one parent there, the vast majority.
Okay.
Okay, there are a couple of hands up, um, so while, while we're thinking about this, why don't we listen to the comments? Um and again, it's about this, these particular field trips, um, so Ryan Lynch.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, uh, Ryan Lynch, Six Concord Circle, I'm, I'm just. You know, my one concern here is we're talking about 25 players on the hockey team. Yet, we were told that the last call, we have no access to the vaccination rates of the hundreds of teachers. That walk into each of our schools every day, so if we're truly concerned, as Tim said, about the vaccination rates and removing masks. I think the bigger priority should be the hundreds of teachers, not the 25 kids on the hockey team.
I was already addressing the MOA.
Yeah, the, the MOA is gonna allow us to get that information, Ryan. Um Rebecca?
Hi, I guess, um, I have a concern when I hear us sort of talking about.
Sorry, could you just say your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Rebecca Lynch, Six Concord Circle, um, I'm, I'm listening to you guys go back and forth about. Um, well, one night's better than two nights, which is better than three nights, and I think that's a real dangerous. Game that you're playing in terms of like, being scientists and determining what's, I mean, according to the CDC, a close contact is 15 minutes of unmasked time. So I don't care if it's one night or two nights, I don't think you can be making distinctions of which is a safer field trip because of how many nights they're going. I feel like you're getting very subjective here about what's safe and what's not safe, so it's either. Field trips can happen or field trips can't happen, I mean, one night versus two, like. It just, it just seems, I don't know, like now you're gonna have a million bullet points about. One overnight field trip, it is just, it sounds like it's just getting a little out of control to me.
Yeah, no, well, I would just say that we're trying to find a way to let this go forward, because in the, the interest of getting things kind of back to normal. To the degree we can, um, the field trip is happening at the end of the week, so if a child is not vaccinated, that probably can't happen. Unless they can get the J and J by the end of the week, um, so we're, we're trying to figure out what mitigation members, measures we can put in.
Yeah.
And if I can just clarify, Rebecca, uh, I, when I was talking, I was talking about, not that a one night overnight trip was safer. Than a three night over trip, I was saying that testing twice within two days might be excessive. So I was looking at the short amount of the trip and seeing if there was a way to do it with a test upon return and maybe a health check to leave. That was the point of my, what I was saying.
Right, I heard, but Liza did say that she felt more comfortable with a one night trip versus a multi night trip, and I feel like you can get COVID in 15 minutes, so they say, so I. I just, I don't think it's fair for the, the crew team to be saying, oh, well, unfortunately, we have a multi night trip, like that's not more dangerous than a one night trip. I'm, I'm almost trying to support the Florida trip that's happening, not that I have any skin in that game, but just playing this. Uh, we're not scientists, so I don't really think that the school committee, I don't know, should be determining one night versus two nights. What's safer, does that make sense? We have a hang, you know, maybe the Hingham Board of Health could come in here, but I don't know that. I'll end it there.
Actually, Rebecca, I was the one that had the concern of whether this should happen or not because of. It's just an overnight trip, so I agree with you. I, 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 I'm conflicted.
I'm not conflicted, I'm, I, what I was just saying, I don't think we can scale, like, the Florida trip is four nights, this is one night, so this one can go, like. That doesn't just, it just doesn't seem. What?
Are you advocating against the overnight field trips?
No, not at all, not at all, I'm advocating against saying that one is safer than another, just due to how many days.
Okay.
What is logistically more complicated for uh to get a kid home from Florida?
I think we're also talking about, though, you're saying, what if, you know, sending vaccinated, we know that vaccinated people can also get COVID, so. I understand that you're saying everybody should be vaccinated, but that is not going to get rid of the risk of getting COVID, I mean, we're seeing this now all the time. People are vaccinated and testing positive, so I think, I know you're linking the two so tightly, um, but.
Okay, Ness, did you?
Yeah, I, I, I think we, we're not necessarily making a distinction for days, I think we are. Um, we still need to review the policy, which the Policy Subcommittee Group had been working on, we're gonna take our first read. I think we're talking about just next week, trying to make next week happen and how to do that. I don't think, I mean, I don't think that we're gonna be talking about days in the policy, um, so I don't think that will be an issue going forward.
Right. Okay, Barbie Lynch?
Hi, Barbie Lynch from Three West Moreland Road, um, I keep hearing, hearing everybody saying, I know it's, it will go further on. But I, I think it's important to note for all of these trips that you keep saying vaccinated as if saying not able to get COVID. And that's just not the case, um, and we really need to be looking at other options, especially if it's going to be this coming weeks. I, I do think testing for all, and this is what my comment was in the beginning of, um, earlier is. I was gonna make a proposal for later on for your, um, big, um, for the sub policy or the policy that you're gonna set of. Putting it in there, testing for everyone, um, because as it stands right now, vaccinated or not, you can still get and give COVID. That's just the science.
Can we just bring this back to the hockey field trip, and we are gonna discuss this later on, um, do you have something about this specific trip?
Yes, that, that, where, you're, you're talking about vaccinated versus unvaccinated, and that, that is part of it. So it, it goes along with it specifically, that I think that should be that everybody should get tested, one way or another.
Okay, thank you. Um Suzanne Garland. Suzanne? Let's see, we can't hear her. Not sure why, um. What, we're gonna, let's move on to Sarah Gordon and we'll come back to Suzanne, hopefully.
Hi, Sarah Gordon, 19, Fulling Millane, um, since the field trip is so soon and we're obviously having a lot of. Um, issues back and forth debating it, I'm just gonna throw it out there, what about leaving it up to the parents to decide?
To decide what?
Decide whether their kid should be vaccinated, not vaccinated, go test.
Yeah, I'm assuming that they've done that already, our, our responsibility is to approve or not approve field trips. Okay, um, next is, let's see, Suzanne, let's try her again. Yeah, it's still not working. Um, let's move on to Rebecca Silva, we'll try that again later.
Hi, yes, I just wanted, Rebecca Silva, Three Stonegate Lane, I just, this is just about this uh trip. And I don't have any skin in the game, but I just think it's important to bring back up what Dr. Jamie mentioned, which is. If it's a school sponsored trip and part of this test and stay policy. It's about because it's a controlled environment and they would be assuming, it sounded to me like he was saying. It would be assuming that while the students are away and on this trip, they would be following the same. Procedure, safety precautions that we use in the school, meaning indoors, masked. Hand washing, all of those safety things, so I just felt like that maybe got a little missed. And I just wanted to bring that up to see and maybe ask, um. Coach Q, is that, is that a reasonable expectation? Um, for a multi day, for this multi day hockey trip? Thank you.
Hey, thank you Rebecca, Jim, did you want to take that?
Yeah, sure, um, it has to be, um, from, uh, just a, a, a public health and, and that. And, and keeping students uh in, in class um on a daily basis, but you know, a, a very big difference from this year. To last year when we dealt with COVID, is that if a case popped and there were close contacts determined, a team was shut down for a period of time. And then you, then you all came back together, and if you were able to make up the games, you made up the games. What's different here is because of vaccination status and the changing of, of certain guidelines. It's very likely that if one or two or three are affected and need to quarantine, those, those student athletes will not participate. And the team will have to continue on, and that's very different in a, in a competitive, in a competitive environment that will have statewide tournament. Empower rankings, um, and it's why we focused on the idea that, you know, to avoid disruption, both from a team perspective and individually. That we should, um, that, that we should be considering vaccination. It's, it's down to locker room use at, at Pilgrim, it's a business transaction, go in. Take something off, put something on, get out of there, it's, it's, there, there are a host of things that we must do. To keep these teams in competition, and I think both Coach Finley and Coach Messina are, are recognizing that, are understanding it, and are enforcing it.
Great, thank you, that's helpful, I, I think the one distinction though, between um, the regular school day and that controlled environment. Is the hotel room and the fact that they're gonna be, you know, sharing hotel rooms, um, and that's, that's a little different than. And, and presumably taking their mask off to sleep, so I think that's one distinction, but, but it's, it's definitely worth. Keeping that in mind that there are other protocols in place. All right.
Ask if a lot of, if most, most students have parents coming, are they staying in the hotel in family groups or?
Sorry, I, I have them on a call while we're going through this, just in case questions came up that I didn't have the exact answer to, so I apologize if it's a little clunky here.
Good question, Tim.
Yeah, student athletes are sharing rooms, Carrie, you are correct.
Okay, so what are we gonna do on this?
Can I ask Coach Q? What would you do?
So I would be working with the coaches to enforce, and then, you know, they're listening. Um, so working with the coaches to enforce the protocols that we need to have in place to ensure the safety as best we can. But where, upon the return and the fact that we're covered by test and stay. Um, I feel like the unvaccinated students will be able to access that test and stay program if they develop symptoms. And, and that, that would work similarly to if they had just gone to school uh in those previous days. I, it, you know, it's, to me, the risk. Um, you, you know. I'm, I'm gonna say this, but to me, the risk is, is the opponent. Um, when, if, if we don't go to Vermont or New Hampshire, um, these, these student athletes are. Are jumping into cars when they leave property and, and they're spending their time together. Just as much as, as, as if we do take these trips, it's, and so when we're in competition, I know we're gonna be able to control our masking. And the procedures that we need to, to abide by, um, I recognize. You know, that this, that, that, that this does come with risk, but I, I think that with the test and state program in place and covering the trip. That I think the, the, the risk can be somewhat minimized when the, if symptoms were developed or we, we were to have. Uh, uh, close contacts identified.
Carlos?
This is uh very complicated, so it's not a very um easy decision, obviously, because we are responsible. Um, you know. For making. Decisions that may affect one or the other, but I think uh, I, you know, what Michelle just did here and asking. Jim for his recommendation, and we heard that loud and clear. I would um move that one, yes, we continue to listen to his recommendation. Uh, he's assuring us that, that we will make sure that they are following all the protocols. Uh, I would go even further than that, I think regardless whether the person is vaccinated or not. That we find a way of uh measuring everyone's temperature before they get on a bus or on a plane, besides the test and everything else. I'm not sure if this would be even more, this would complicate things more, but um, you know. I, I sort of like, you know, I don't want to stop this from happening, I am cautious about everything that's happening out there. But I think we already been holding these kids. Um, up way too long, so I'm in favor of following his recommendations. Um, and whatever procedure we can put in place to facilitate uh the leaders of the trips. To be taking the students' temperatures, just to ensure that they have no symptoms. Uh, so that way we don't compromise the trip as a whole, I think would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I wish that I had one. I'm still not sure where I'm landing on it, um. To me, it seems prudent to put a, put a test requirement in here somewhere, um, I just don't know if it's before they go. After they come back, but then the burden, puts the burden on the families for the vaccinated students, right? Because they can't do the test and stay, that's only for the unvaccinated students, um. So I'm sorry, that was no answer to your question, does anyone have, the answer to your question, I don't have, I don't have a motion at this moment, Carrie.
You know, I would prioritize testing upon return rather than testing upon leaving, maybe a, approved, so. I'm not making the motion, I'm just trying to figure out what it would be. So a health check before you leave. Uh, COVID protocols in place on the trip, uh, and a test when you, upon return. And a test upon return, whether that's test families have to do themselves or a test and stay test for the unvaccinated kids. I'm thinking it's just for, I mean, we're clearly the only need for this trip because that wouldn't make sense as a long-term policy because you're actually harder for the vaccinated kids than for the unvaccinated kids.
Right, I know.
To me, but for just this trip.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. I don't know how other people feel about that. And you're right, this will only probably apply to these two trips and not to, we'll have a policy to cover going forward, but which will make it easier. So.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So a motion to approve the proposed overnight trips to Vermont for the girls varsity ice hockey team in December and the boys varsity hockey team to travel to New Hampshire in December twenty twenty one. With the condition that each player, that student attendee receives a COVID PCR test upon return.
And a health check upon leaving.
Completes a health check prior to leaving and receive and and takes a COVID PCR test upon return.
How long after the return? Is that, that they might not get the results back right away and then you might have kids not able to come back to school. Whereas if we did it, did the testing before the kids could go on to the, to the trip. And then upon return, just ensure that they are not symptomatic. You know, because, yeah, I mean, they could book their tests now to come back. And some of them get their results back within twenty four hours, but if they don't, then they're out of school.
I think they have to go to school. You know, unless they're symptomatic. Gary?
We don't offer PCR tests in schools. So that's one of the, the, the questions I have is, is where would they get that test from? And it's different return rate based on where you get the test. So that would complicate things.
What if we say a health check upon return, a health check, a health check from when they leave and a health check from when they return if they're symptomatic? Test.
Would you say health check, Jen and Tim? What do you mean? Like an assessment of symptoms?
Yes.
A temperature check and assessment of symptoms. And it's not a very serious test, like it's a low bar to jump over. I get it.
I guess I'm thinking of what we, what the emails, you know, we get from the, from the nurses at the beginning of the year. You know, that you would check your symptoms. And if you, if you have any of these COVID symptoms, that would, why you can't can't go to school if you have a fever or, and it's different for vaccinated versus unvaccinated. That's, that in my mind, that's what I'm thinking about. I don't know if that, I can't speak for, for Tim.
And who would, would that be the parent administered or staff in the district administering that to the kids?
I'm thinking the parent.
We could potentially use our athletic trainer, Alblaze Delta, to help with that process.
That's an easy process. That'd be my preference. Better if someone from HPS.
Okay, so the motion we have is a health check before leaving and a health check upon return. Is that?
I'll second that.
Okay, somebody needs to make that motion better than I just did though. So.
To approve the girls and boys varsity ice hockey teams travel to Vermont and New Hampshire in December twenty twenty one, subject to health checks to be completed prior to and upon return from the trip.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Carlos. All right, all in favor, Michelle?
Can I?
Sorry, Liza, go ahead.
Can I amend the motion to require any unvaccinated students to be enrolled in test and stay?
Okay, does that work?
So that we catch, we make sure they get tested upon return is my concern that if they develop symptoms, because they're the most vulnerable, because we're, a vaccination is reducing risk is really all it is. But it significantly reduces the risk. But our risk is if there's an unvaccinated player, which I'm highly doubting there is. But, or it's going to be a really small number, but that's going to be our risk of that person getting sick and then that person, that's the higher risk. So.
Gary, Gary and Jamie, does that sound reasonable to you?
Can we request people to enroll in test and stay?
We have asked our, our students, parents to actually enroll in test and stay. We have people signing up for it every day. So even today, we have people signing up. So that's something they can do.
But we can't make them do that.
That's, yes, that was my question.
Oh, but this is an optional program. And we're putting, we're putting conditions on this program.
Oh, no, I understand. I'm just, I'm just making it clear so that we, so just as a, just, I guess, as hockey is, is a supplemental program that they would, I'm just saying, we don't have the ability to make anybody test and stay. The parents would have to sign that.
Right. Oh, no, I understand that. But if that's the condition of going on the trip, if you're unvaccinated, that's the request.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, an amended motion. Do we have a second for the amended motion? Okay.
Can someone just repeat the motion? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Liza, can you?
Um, I believe the motion was for to prove the trip that all athletes would receive a health check prior to going on the trip and upon return and that any unvaccinated players enroll in the test and stay program for follow-up testing upon return. If needed.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. All right, all in favor, Michelle?
Uh, I.
Jen?
Hi.
Yes. Was that an I?
No, it's an I. Yeah.
Carlos?
I'm staying.
I'm staying. Okay, Tim? You're muted.
I.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So after all that, I hope they have a great trip. Sorry. Yep.
Me too. I, sorry, thanks, Carrie. Um, Jim, I think, and I know you've got the coaches or some of them on the phone. Just to reiterate, there's this kind of a test, right? This is sort of the first stress test that we're, we're doing here. So tell everyone to be very careful and to really, to really watch because, right, this, and this is a little bit of a test and we're taking some risk here. So.
One hundred percent understood.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Nine point seven is to consider a resolution in support of a townwide sustainability director and act as appropriate. Carlos, this is yours.
Thank you, Carrie. Sheri, can you please share the draft resolution?
I can do that. That might take a second. Just, I will get that right up.
Thank you. So as she's doing that, you all received the draft resolution along with the just sort of like, you know, a breakdown of the sustainability direct position that we are presenting to town administrators and the advisory trying to, we are hoping that they will help us. You know, hire someone eventually and create the position. So essentially, you all may remember that at the town meeting in twenty twenty one, the committee voted to adopt the climate goal of net zero carbon emission and to form a climate action planning committee to evaluate a wide range of carbon emissions reductions strategy to achieve this goal. So as part of the climate action planning committee, which Carrie selected me to represent the school committee, we, we have been working very hard to come up with the different, you know, definitions of net zero and really study what's going to take place in order for us to achieve net zero. The Hingham Municipal Light Plant appropriated eighty thousand dollars to actually fund the development of a climate action plan. So it's part of the goal to hire a consultant to help us design the plan. So if you would ask, why do you need, we need a sustainability director? A sustainability director cannot be put in a box. Sustainability director sometimes called a sustainability coordinator, sustainability consultants or energy manager, few many roles. One of them is the fact that they are professionals and they, they have a degree on such a matter. They have studied the environment and no public policy from those perspective unbelievable. And many towns around us already have a sustainability director. We are finding that there is plenty of money through grants to actually support the sustainability director. As a matter of fact, members of the county, the climate action planning committee already have a verbal confirmation, verbal confirmation from Senator O'Connor that would actually earn mark about between thirty five to forty thousand. So we can, you know, you know, support this position. So essentially, just to summarize, you know, the, the resolution, which is actually has been adopted by the climate action planning committee last week and has been submitted to the town administrators, to the board of, the, the AdCom and other entities. The resolution is pretty similar to ours that we are about to introduce. And it's essentially, it's just supporting the creation of a sustainability director position on the fiscal year twenty twenty three. And it's, it's calling on the board of select persons and the advisory to push that forward for us. So Carrie, do you want me to go over the resolution now?
Yeah, sure.
So you have that up on the screen. And so the Hingham School Committee Resolution, this is a Hingham School Committee Resolution calling on the Hingham Select Board and Advisory Committee to include a sustainability direct opposition in the fiscal year twenty twenty three town budget. Whereas the town of Hingham voted at town meeting twenty twenty one to adopt the climate goal of net zero carbon emissions and to form a climate action planning committee to evaluate a wide range of carbon emissions reduction strategies to achieve this goal. Whereas meeting this, meeting the town net zero goal, we will require a specific professional environmental and administrative expertise. Whereas the Hingham Municipal Light Plant appropriated eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars to fund the development of a climate action plan. Whereas collaboration with other town entities and regional bodies is essential to meeting our goal. Whereas ample competitive grant funding for sustainability project is available or coming available in fiscal year twenty twenty three via the Green Community Programs, the Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act and other programs. Whereas the town, as a green community participant, is committed to aggressive energy reduction. Whereas the Hingham Public School Buildings and Automobiles run primarily on fossil fuels. And whereas the Hingham Public Schools missions include instilling students responsibility for the environment. And it is the responsibility of the school committee to support this mission. Therefore, be resolved that the Hingham School Committee calls on the Hingham Selecting Board and Advisory Committee to include a sustainability direct opposition in the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. I'm here to urge my fellow school committee members to join me in supporting this resolution. This is just like, you know, saying, we, the school committee running, you know, most of the resources in town between the buildings, the six buildings that we run, the twenty-two buses, thirteen vans, four drivers add automobiles and several trucks. I think we have a stake on this and it would be great that we support the Climate Action Committee on this effort to hire a sustainability director.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Do you want to come out of the shared screen? I'm, my, oh, thanks, Sheri. So does anyone have any thoughts, questions on this one, Tim?
Yeah, we're asking, going to be asking for a lot this year. And I don't know if we want to put in a recommendation to the select boards that to hire a position when we're doing that outside of the process of budget season. I know it's not the school's budget to be coming from, but it's certainly, and there's one pool of money the town is looking at. And we want a finance director, we want an equity and inclusion director. I, I'd just be happier if this was in a bigger budget discussion, since there's actually no number attached to what this position would cost.
As a matter of fact, the document that I provide attached to this did provide a range, which is a range. But as, as we here stated, how imperative was for us to hire a, an HR director? And we know how, you know, HR director's been doing so awesome that, you know, sometimes those positions makes things, you know, improve, right? Same thing goes with the director of maintenance. We, for many years, requested that we have, you know, director of maintenance. We hired a person and guess what? Things are moving forward and, you know, we are getting a lot of more preventive maintenance work done because we have a very competent, oh, very competent individuals leading our schools. Now, this would not come from the school budget. This would be the town's budget. And essentially, this would be offset by grants. So it may not cost us a dime and it could be a win-win for everyone in town. If you look at the data that I provided to everyone beforehand, it shows how the other towns around us has been taking advantage of grants, raising a lot of money. And we in Hingham have not taken advantage of that because we don't have individuals writing grants. And this, if you, you know, those individuals that have been here for five or six years have heard me loud and clear, you know, speaking at the, you know, before the board of select persons requesting that they consider hiring a grant writer for that purpose. Now this individual, you know, the sustainability director would actually fulfill their role. That person would be writing grants. And by the way, you know, we already have verbal, you know, agreement from our Senator O'Connor that he would earn market up, you know, to forty thousand dollars. This is, this would be a one-year time, you know, special project. But you know, once we have the person here, let me tell you, nothing will be stopping us. There was plenty of free money out there. And as I said, there is money comes from, you know, the. did I say the Green Community Programs, the Infrastructure Investments, Job Acts, Biden just passed a huge bill. And there's plenty of money there. So that's my point.
Michelle.
And this, and this is the beginning, by the way, of the budget conversation. This is where, you know, the town and us, the school committee have formulated our budget. So this is the right timing.
Michelle, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I personally fully support the creation of this position. I mean, the argument that you lay out here, Carlos, is very compelling, right? I mean, there's millions of dollars out there that Hingham could be taking advantage of and that we're going to need to take advantage of to get us to net zero by 2040, which is surprisingly not that far away anymore. And the schools, you know, are significant consumers of fossil fuels and would benefit from this. My only hesitation, though, is that I, this does feel, it just doesn't, I don't know, I'm sorry, it just doesn't feel appropriate for in my, what I'm thinking, it just doesn't feel appropriate for the school committee to be asking for funding for another town committee. Like, it just feels outside of what we, this body should be doing is requesting funding for another body, another town body.
So let me explain that. As I am the liaison to the school committee with the Climate Action Planning Committee. This is part of our, this is part of our development. The Climate Action Planning Committee, essentially, we will only operate, one, if we able to hire the consultant to actually help us write the climate action plan, number one. Number two, once that plan is written, we need someone to operate it, to process it, to work with the town administrators to put that in place. Because otherwise, we're not gonna have a driver. Right? We need a drive of that program. So essentially, the position will be created. As you mentioned, Michelle, I mean, the argument here is that this will be a position that will be offset by money coming in, not just to pay that individual, hopefully, extra money.
I 100% support the position and get the economics of it. It makes all the sense in the world. I'm just struggling with this body asking other bodies to approve money for a third body, right? So with the school committee to ask the advisory and the select board to approve a salaried position for another body, just does, I don't know, it just doesn't seem, seems odd. I don't know that it's anything we've ever done before. And I don't know that it's really in our purview to to set a resolution on behalf of another town body. But I could be wrong.
Liza?
Um, so I think I, I, I agree with the need of the person, but I agree with Michelle and Tim in that the way this resolution is written is the school committee is going directly to the select board. I would rather table this and wait until the, maybe if it's the Climate Action Planning Committee is making a request to the select board. And then they're discussing the overall budget. And in the context of our budget that we can support what the Climate Action Planning Committee is recommending for more specifics, as opposed to us coming out now and we're going, you're asking us to have the school committee go directly to the select board to include this position. I would rather, if we're gonna take a position, we're supporting the Climate Action Committee's recommendation, or when the select board is discussing the overall budgets, when it gets to that point, that we're then, can we can identify, you know, this, this position would then benefit us in these ways in our budget requests. So I just think this is a little too premature. That we're ahead of ourselves in the, the conversation about this position in town government. Sort of as Tim mentioned. So I just think we should wait until the process rolls out a little bit further before we take a position.
Yeah, Ed, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carlos.
Yeah, no, just to your point, Liza, I understand what you, Michelle, and, and Tim concerns are. But here's what we have to sort of like think through. That in order for us to have the charging stations, the efficiency on our bus, electrical bus, which we just got new buses, so it's not gonna happen through another five years. We will need someone to obviously do that, or the study. And I understand what you're saying. Have we gone to the other boards and requested them to do other things for us? We have not specifically to just the town administrators or the Board of Selectment and the advisory through a resolution. But we do that every year through our budget process. That's essentially what we're doing. We are requesting. And then we are there as a member of town meeting, supporting as an individual. But, you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying. As a body, is this right to do? I think it is right to do because we work collectively with them. We are not going to be the only entity doing this. As a matter of fact, the Climate Action Planning Committee already introduced this resolution and already provided a copy to the leadership already. So they have a copy. And the Hingham Municipal Light Plant is doing the same. Hingham Net Zero is doing the same. So we actually have a goal right now. We're doing an outreach to all the the bodies, the other entities in town, asking them to respectfully consider a resolution similar to that. Essentially, it's just supporting the creation of the position now. It's just supporting, right? And I think, you know, the individuals out there, because they know that we are the largest consumer of, you know, energy, would appreciate that. So that's pretty much it.
So I, I very much support this position personally as well. I think it's important. And I think in our role as a school committee, I think we should work on policies and it should be factored into our budget. And I definitely see the value of having this position. But I'm kind of in agreement with, I think, Michelle, with Michelle, Liza, and Tim, and that I don't know that a resolution right now is the way to go about it. I'm just thinking about what, you know, it, we, I think, working along with, alongside with the advisory committee and the select board, I think we have a lot to offer with that because you're right, we are the biggest consumer in town. But it just, it feels a little funny now. And I'm thinking about, what if it was in the reverse? Like, what if the select board came up with a resolution saying, we should, we think you should allocate your budget this way? That would be overstepping. And it sort of feels the same way here, where, I mean, definitely, we should support it. But I don't know that a resolution is the right way to do it. I know they're considering it. I think it's on their agenda in the next couple of weeks. So like, go, we could go and speak to it if, you know, for anyone who feels strongly about it. But it's kind of, we all have roles to play within the budget process and the town government. And this, this feels like maybe getting kind of stepping out of our lane and getting ahead of ourselves to me. I don't know. I don't know if anyone else has anything.
Just to play devil's advocate, can we envision a world where net zero submits a recommendation to the select board that we, schools get a fine arts director?
Right, that's exactly, that's what, yeah, yeah. So, but I do think it's an important, it is an important role. And I'd love to do what we can to support it going forward. But it's just, I don't know, I don't, I don't know about right now. So where are we on this? Do we want to table it and bring it up again later? Or do we want to?
To be honest, yeah, to be honest, I'm not even sure if, if, if there was anybody else that would just like to make a comment, there was individuals representing CACP and also net zero in a call. If you would allow them to speak, I'm not sure if they're raising their hands or not.
I see Christie Kondraki. They don't allow her to talk.
Yeah, she's a member, if you could, yeah, she's a member of net zero.
Okay, great.
Hello?
Yep.
Yeah, this is, well, you can probably hear, this is not Christie, this is Chris Kondraki, who is the, so Christie and I are on the, the call together. But my question is, is not about the net zero, but I do just want to ask a question now. And I really appreciate all of your concern and hard work. But there have been just so many topics that have been brought up. And there have been some comments that have been made by certain members of the school committee. And I just want to put this question out there. There was one statement by one of the members which said pretty emphatically or definitively that the unvaccinated are higher.
Sorry, so we have to, under open meeting law, we have to stick to the agenda item we're talking about. But we are going to be talking about the vaccines as far as the COVID policies in a little while. So if you want to just hold it until then, we can.
Totally, thank you very much. I will, I will.
Okay. Is anyone else? I don't see any other hands up from the public. Oh, actually, John Borger from, it looks like Hingham Net Zero. See, I'm trying to allow him to talk. Oh, there we go. John, are you able to unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Ah, wonderful, thank you. Let me just try to be brief. I'm really heartened by the expressions of support, the concept of the, and the need for a sustainability director. I understand completely that you're sort of wrestling with a different issue, which is what is in scope for the committee right now? What makes sense? And so I have to tell you, I'm, you know, I'm gonna have to defer to your judgment on that. Carlos, I, you know, I think that that's the position that we have to take. The committee has to decide what's in its purview, what is appropriate, and how it wants to represent itself as we move through this budget process. So I think that we've presented a business case to the decision makers for this position, which is pretty compelling and which shows them that this is a kind of a rainmaker position, if you will. It's an investment. It's not pure overhead. It's going to bring in many, many times the amount that will be expended in funding the position. So I, I think I'm comfortable in leaving it at that. The Energy Action Committee tonight, which does have a vested interest in this, for instance, voted a similar resolution to the Climate Action Planning Committee. I, I think the, the totality of the case that's been presented, hopefully, will be compelling. And you know, as maybe as individuals, you could, can, you know, communicate that you, as private citizens, are in support of this. But as a school committee, I understand your, your sort of process and kind of jurisdictional concerns. So I, I'm fine with the position that you've taken. And I appreciate the support you've expressed. But I think, Carlos, perhaps people need to digest this and see how the budget process goes and come to a more comfortable judgment about, you know, is this appropriate or not? And I understand completely those concerns. So thank you for the opportunity. Oh, I should have introduced myself. John Borger, 53 Lafayette Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you, John. And I agree, you definitely put together a compelling case. And, okay, so with that being said, are we, Carlos, are you comfortable with?
Yeah, I am. So let's, let's, we'll draw the resolution instead of table, table. That's we'll draw the resolution and see where that takes us. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. And let us know if, how it can help in other ways moving forward. All right, next is 9.8 to receive a homeschool application for two students, grades three and one, and act as appropriate. Gary, are you, you were recognizing, you're recommending this?
Yes, we have two plans, homeschool plans that have been reviewed by my office. And they meet the guidelines set forth by the school committee for approval. So I recommend that.
Great. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the homeschool applications for two students, grade three and one, as recommended by interim superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, Ness. All right, all in favor? Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm high as well. Applications are approved. 9.9 is to consider general interim policies on COVID-19 related to issues, including health and safety policies related to overnight field trips. And this is a first read of the policy. For anyone who's on the call who hasn't been on our calls before, when we've done policy, we always, the Policy Subcommittee makes a recommendation of the full school committee. And then we read it at least twice before we pass a new policy. This is the first read. So, well, Jen will take us through what the recommendation is. And if anyone has questions, then we'll discuss that. And then we'll take it up most likely at the next meeting, depending on how many changes that the committee is wants after the initial read. So Jen, do you want to take us through these?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I cut out, I will, I will just turn my camera off just to let you know, having some connection problems tonight. Okay, so as Carrie said, the Policy Subcommittee met and we updated the Hingham Public Schools, the general interim policies on COVID-related issues from last year. And we removed all of the thank you. For starters, what we did was we removed all of the back-to-school plan language. And additionally, then we also added at the end of all of the policies, an additional policy, which is the overnight field trip travel policy that includes vaccination requirement. And it was, I think, as you can all recall, this was requested from the committee during one of our field trip approvals. So the policy committee worked on that. Does anyone have any question from the committee? Is, okay, Carrie, if we go over just the first parts, the general interim policies?
You're gonna go.
Any of that before we kind of just break it into two sections?
Okay.
If anyone has any questions on the general interim policies and COVID-related issues, these are the ones that we had in place from last year. And we just through them, committee went through them and removed the back-to-school language. If anyone has any questions on that.
Yeah, there really weren't many changes to this. And because with the share screen, I can't see if you could just raise your hand if you're have any questions on that. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we'll go down to the field trip.
Okay. Okay, so as I stated before, we added the vaccination requirement. And this is for all overnight field trips to participate in Hingham Public Schools sponsored domestic and international night field trips. All Hingham Public Schools ages five and older must be fully vaccinated against COVID-19. Student travels must follow all local mandates and guidelines upon return, studentship Hingham COVID-19 travel recommendations. And then we listed the CDC's definition of fully vaccinated. And then we added in some exemptions, which would be a medical exemption and a religious exemption. And then we added that students would have to be granted, students that are granted exemptions must provide a negative COVID PCR test within 72 hours of departure. And then we also added language on if you are, if you'd had COVID-19, you had an exemption, we added language on that. And then we also added that the policy would be subject to review upon any changes in Massachusetts Department of Public Health and our Center for Disease Control Guidelines. I know I just went through that really quick. I apologize. It's been a long night. So anyone has any questions on that? I know we had a Has any questions on that? I know we had a lengthy conversation earlier on the hockey trip, but I think we all brought up some really good points on that.
Tim?
Uh, I know people have stated in the comments before correctly that, you know, people who are vaccinated can catch COVID as well. Uh, I'm wondering if, I'm, I'm thinking about the question of, you know, it doesn't really apply to the New Hampshire trips, but more to the European trips of who's responsible for kids who would become sick.
I didn't get, I didn't catch the end of, ending of that.
Oh, uh, uh, just the situation of somebody's on a trip, whether it's in Florida or in Prague. Uh, if somebody develops COVID on, on the trip, develops symptoms on the trip, what is the policy for getting that student home, quarantining that student in the country if they're unable to travel home on airlines? Who's financially responsible for that?
So.
And I know it's an unlikely scenario until it comes up and then it'll be a nightmare.
So I would think that that would be more of a procedure as, as opposed to a policy. I'm up paralyzed second. What's our thoughts are, or anyone else?
Michelle?
Sorry, I, I would think the same, that it's more of a procedure versus a policy. But that was something that I, for some reason, hit me the other day. I was thinking, what if somebody does get COVID on one of these trips where they would have to get on a plane to come home because they're not going to be able to get on a plane to come home? And I mean, I hate to bring this up now because we've already approved several airplane travel shirts. Um, it just I just feel like our eagerness to get these, get things back to normal for the kids, I'm feeling like that's a real possibility. And what are we going to do? And I don't know, Gary, if you have a thoughts on that or know what other districts are doing?
Tell you that I received, um, a shared email with superintendents from the South. And, uh, there are many districts that are not considering out of country field trips yet. So I think we're probably on the curve on, on that particular issue. So, you know, I think we're being challenged with these decisions. Uh, they might actually help to set the pace for other districts in the area.
All right. So, but as far as the policies themselves, is, is, is that something? Are you suggesting that the policy subcommittee should dig into that?
No.
We want to keep, I mean, we want to keep it as, uh, policy should really be high level. And, and the thing is too, like each trip will be different. You know, going to Vermont isn't the same as going to Florida is going to Prague. So it's, you know, that's where, when people are talking about this being kind of procedure based, that's kind of.
Yeah, yeah. No, I one hundred percent agree. I'm, I'm sorry to do it, but I'm, I'm squarely dumping this on Gary and, and company to figure out what, what will, because we have already approved some. So what will we, how, we'll need to come up with, when I say we, I mean, you as superintendent in charge of the procedures and operations of the school, um, how you, how we, how will we, how that will be managed? And, and I'm sure the travel companies have, my assumption is the travel companies have some plan for this, right? There, that would be my guess, that they do.
Okay. All right. Any other initial comments or questions? For the first read? Yep, Michelle?
Two more. Um, so one of them was that, so we, in here, we're defining fully vaccinated as two doses, but are we including boosters in here? And if we are, sorry, Gary, again, I'm going to, how are we going to track that? How are we going to? Are we going to track boosters the same way we were tracking vaccine status? And that seems like that gets more complicated because it's, they're sort of timed, right? So now it's like, when do we know?
Yeah, the, the most difficult part for us, and, um, we're going to experience this once again. When we're going to have our teacher vaccination data, we're working on that within the next two weeks. We're going to work on an update to our student vaccination data. Uh, that includes first shot, second shot and booster. And those are all phased. So we, so that means that we have to keep running this data. Right? So now we have the five three eleven, we're going to have to run that. But again, that's only for, it, it's very, it's very complicated. But I think to your point, Michelle is, there isn't a, it's a snapshot in time for the day of when we run the data. So I think it's very complicated in the sense of when the field trip starts, we're going to give you the information for the week before, right? It's not going to be the day up because it, it's extremely cumbersome to run this.
Yeah. So the definition of fully vaccinated came from what the CDC currently calls fully vaccinated and right, they don't currently ask for boosters. So what we kind of, that's one of the reasons that we put that line at the end that it'll be subject to review under any changes in Mass Department of Public Health and our CDC, um, guidelines. Um, just because this is one of those things that the science keeps changing on it. So, uh, and evolving. Um, we probably, I would think we would meet and, and discuss that again if it changes.
All right. I was thinking, or a suggestion could be to just say students aren't considered fully vaccinated per the CDC, um, definition. So then you wouldn't necessarily, so if they change it to be booster, you wouldn't have to go back and add booster, you can just say, hey, that's what the definition is. So that brings me to my next question, um, or comment on it. So, and I think it just solidified it a little bit more based on Gary's comment about about the exit, about the collecting the data for the students and then the timing. And so I don't know, I'm starting to think more about if our goal here is to keep students healthy and keep COVID out of the schools so that we can keep students in schools longer. I feel like I'm leaning more towards for these field trips is the overnight field trips, just to clarify, is to, to do the testing. Like I think the testing is really the important part, like to know whether or not the kids have COVID.
I would, I would agree with that, Michelle. I think, yeah, yeah. Don't mind me. I don't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's all I had, that's all I had.
Um, we've obviously been doing a lot of thought on this as well, then, um. I think based on our conversation that we had earlier on the hockey trips, I think our clear goal here is to keep the kids safe. The participants on, on the trip safe, the people that they're encountering on their trip safe. And I think the best way to do that, because things are so evolving, so much stuff is coming, you know, new in the news is to test. Um, but then I do worry, is that feasible? This is an entire grade. One of these trips, this is, we're talking about all these trips, but one of these trips is an entire grade of kids. And is that, can we do that? My question.
All right. Okay, Gary had something. I don't know if he's missed, it's off camera now. So, any other comments or questions? Ness?
Yeah, I, I think I, I'm leaning the same way. I'd be inclined to say not necessarily mandating a vaccine, but saying that we should, um, have the kids tested before they go.
And return?
I think upon return.
Yeah. Gary?
Yeah, and this was my comment earlier. I think the complication we have is, um, the test, the time for testing. And, and I, I just checked for, um, a PCR results return. And, and based on the, uh, in, increase of, of cases, the PCR test return rate is, is two to three days. So we'd have to keep that into consideration for PCR.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the school committee on this? Okay, there are two hands up. Up, sorry. Tim, did you have something?
I was, I was just going to point out the downside of the testing as opposed to vaccine would be that it takes like five days for symptoms to show up. So I don't know if you're getting, if you're getting tested after, uh, close exposure but don't have symptoms, you're supposed to wait five days after the exposure in order to be tested. So I'm wondering that, that puts a really big window in terms of the tests. I'm I'd, I'd be, oh yeah, that, that's just a comment. I don't, I don't know if tests are the safety blanket that we want them to be.
Yeah, they're snapshots. Okay, um, Christie, or Will, I think, Kandarakhi, or Chris Kandarakhi?
Yes, this is Chris Kandarakhi. Thank you. Yes, I just, um, uh, back to my, uh, the earlier comment, it was stated before by one of the school committee members, that, um, the unvaccinated, it was definitively stated, uh, that unvaccinated are higher risk than the vaccinated. So if, if that is the opinion of, of the school committee or somebody and has influence, I think it would be important to very specifically, uh, cite the sources that say that the unvaccinated are higher risk. And to qualify that, are we talking about their higher risk in terms of them getting COVID? Or transmitting it? Because clear that there has been so much more information that's come out in terms of transmission versus vaccinated and unvaccinated. And then my other question is why has there not been really much conversation or any conversation, especially as it relates to these policies, about all of these incredibly healthy young people that are, are, are wanting to go on this field trip that have already had COVID and recovered from it and not been vaccinated? So my, my question to the committee would be specifically to the person who, who definitively stated that the unvaccinated are higher risk. Are you saying that the, those that have had COVID, these healthy young people that have had COVID and recovered already? Are you saying that they are higher risk than the unvaccinated? And then what would, what would your evidence or science be to support that? And is that, that they're at a higher risk of, of getting it? Or transmitting it? So there really needs to be consideration also for all of these healthy young people that have already had it because the science from Mayo Clinic in Cleveland couldn't be more clear on this now. And yet we're, we're operating with these rules that are, are quite frankly, they're antiquated. And they're not even keeping up with what the current science is saying about vaccinated versus unvaccinated, especially for those that have had it already and have recovered. And how they stack up against the vaccinated. Are we, are we looking at this? Has it been thought about, discussed? In terms of implementing it into these, uh, rules here?
Okay, um, thank you. Would anyone like to take that? Tim?
I can take some of it. Uh, it's in the policy about that you talked about people who've had COVID and recovered from it. It's in the, in the policy that they, uh, as if a student is recently recovered from COVID-19 more than ninety days prior to the, uh, prior to the trip departure date, they may instead provide documentation of recovery from COVID-19. Uh, a, your positive COVID viral test on a sample taken no more than ninety days before the departure and a letter from a licensed healthcare provider. A part of it's in the policy.
And, and that's, and it's written, if you had a, it, that section is written as if you had had a, an exemption. And that language is from, this is directly from the CDC website. It doesn't answer his question fully, but it answers the part about if you've had a prior infection. And there is data on the CDC website about vaccinations offering higher protection than previous COVID-19 infection from October twenty ninth.
Yeah. No, and I think we've, we've all really, um, read up on all of these things and have thought about it. I mean, personally, I have it. And I know the policy subcommittee has, and I think we're all, um, reading everything we can find, um, on this. So yes, to answer that question, yeah, these things are being thought about. Um, next is Lindsay Cruiser.
Here, well, I'm waiting for Lindsay. Could I just add to, to the, uh, another piece of, sorry, Lindsay. Another part of this too, is that though, part of the reason for this as well is to keep kids in school, right? To keep them healthy and also in school, right? So if they, if they contract COVID, then they're not going to be able to be in school if they're unvaccinated.
Right. Okay, Lindsay?
I'm sure. Thank you. Lindsay Cruiser, Ten Quail Run. Um, I just want to thank the school committee for your discussion tonight and potentially being open to the idea of a testing policy instead of a vaccination policy. I think of the goal here is to keep students safe. Um, I think even since the time you discussed, uh, you know, maybe six weeks ago, having this vaccination policy, there's more and more data that vaccinated people can contract and spread the disease. So a testing policy, in my opinion, is a better way to go and also will, you know, eliminate the problem of, for example, with the eighth grade field trip potentially excluding thirty-five percent of students who aren't yet vaccinated and whose parents have made that choice for them from attending a field trip. That's a really important, I think, civic milestone for kids, a really important rite of passage and a really important bonding opportunity with their classmates. So I would just encourage the committee to, you know, consider the impact on kids who frankly, at that age, don't even, you know, have a choice personally as to whether or not they're vaccinated, missing a field trip and to consider if, you know, the real goal is safety here to do the testing as you suggested. Also, just a comment on sort of what Dr. Meistis raised with the PCR. I, I think that the school committee is coming from a good place and thinking about the PCR. But in terms of the return test, if you look at the federal requirements for, for example, when you fly from out of country, they do accept the antigen rapid test. So perhaps taking a lead from that, that would take some of the burden and the risk of students getting results a week later or five days later, if you were to allow the antigen test, which has been successfully used for the test and stay program as well. So again, thank you. I know your hearts are in the right place here. I'm just hoping that we can come to a place where, you know, the community is united around this policy instead of creating more divisions.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Um, and I mean, the, the student social emotional impact too is, is another thing that we've thought about a lot and talked about, and it's, it's extremely important. So thank you for bringing that up. Michelle, did you have something?
No, sorry. I was just looking to see what else we had.
Okay. Okay. Um, so policy has a meeting scheduled, I believe, is this week or next week, Jen?
Uh, the thirteenth.
The thirteenth, or else it's Monday. Um, so we will take everyone's comments into account and, um, see if we need to make some changes to that and what they would be. And we'll have, uh, we'll plan, I think, to put it on the agenda for the twentieth for a second read. And we'll do as many reads as we need to, to make sure. Oh, sorry. I see Barbie Lynch is handed up. Let her talk.
Hi, thank you. Sorry. I think I hit the button to lower my hand. I didn't mean to. A lot of what I was going to say, actually, Lindsay, I couldn't have said it better than she did. I mean, I had a big, long thing I was going to say at the beginning. And, and my biggest thing, and I've said it to you, um, you, Carrie, and I, I've said it in the sub-polity meeting is you guys, we, like, tonight alone, I heard the word to belong at least fifteen times. And I think we really need to be looking at the social emotional impact on the kids for these field trips. Um, they want to feel like they belong. They don't want to be segregated out. And, and I know that word is, is an awful way to say it or discriminating against. But we can't be putting them into boxes and saying, okay, you're vaccinated, you're not. We need to find a policy that includes everybody. I think it's the most important thing to do for them. Um, I, I hear a lot of opinion things in here as well, and, and, and I'm not going to point out names, but um, I think it's important that we're really looking at all of the data and not just going upon personal opinion on this. Someone did mention in this that, um, earlier, when it came to the hockey, that, um, you know, we don't want to set a harder policy for, for the vaccinated. Well, the vaccinated don't get golden stars because of this. You know, they, it, we've got to be treating all kids equal. Everybody has their personal reasons on something that still isn't FDA approved, um, especially on our youngest kids. Especially on our youngest kids that we need to be, my dog is growling over here, we need to be setting, um, policy that includes everybody. So I really, um, hope that you consider in testing for everyone and doing a testing policy as opposed to a vaccine policy. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Barbie. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. And so we'll, we'll work on that in the subcommittee and bring it back. Um, next is 10 subcommittee and project reports. Michelle, do you want to start us off?
I will start off by saying thank you, um, policy subcommittee for all your work on this. I really appreciate it. I know when we started this. School year, we thought, we're not going to need any of these COVID policies anymore. But thank, no, but seriously, thank you, because I know it's a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of. Research goes into it. Um, and appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I will not, I don't have any, so, oh, actually, do you want me to?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, so I have. Um, asked our newest member, Tim Dempsey, if he would be willing to take over as chair of the special ed subcommittee. And although it's a little bit unusual for a brand new member to be, to chair a subcommittee, he's been here long enough at this point. And he's a veteran now. So Tim has graciously agreed if the chair would be so kind as to agree to it. Tim has said that he would be willing to step in as chair of the special ed subcommittee.
Yeah.
He's been here six months, but that six months has been like 10 years long.
Exactly. It's six months, it's 10, it's 10 years in school committees.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you for heading up this special ed subcommittee for as long as you did. You've been at it for years and it's been, you did a phenomenal job. And Tim, thank you for stepping up and, and taking this on. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would just say, sorry, if I can't, just thank you and thank you, Tim. And also my commitment to the special ed community stays. I'll still be the CPAC liaison and I'll remain on the subcommittee. I'm assuming Tim's not kicking me off, so. In his power grab to be.
I don't think you get off that easy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for making me chair of school committee.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
On, on that note, should I do the special ed? I think I was just going to say that CPAC had a, the rights and responsibilities training as well tonight, uh, online. So obviously none of us probably went to it, but I, if people go to the. CPAC Facebook group, I believe they're planning on posting the video because it was on Zoom. So it's definitely something very useful for people to go and check out. And for anyone with a child with special needs, uh, join the CPAC Facebook group. So it's a good, great trove of resources.
Definitely. That's great. Jen?
Sorry about that, sorry about that. A little late. Just as I said earlier, that the policy, we went on December 1st. Went over the COVID related policies. But I also just wanted to add that we also agreed as a subcommittee. That our next task will be to review the school handbook to ensure that they are consistent with the new school committee policy manual. This is one of our goals of the subcommittee that we set this year, and we're committed to getting this important work done.
Great, thank you. Ness?
I have an update for the finance subcommittee. We met as the full school committee a few weeks back now. It seems like forever ago. But talking at a high level about how John and Gary will present the budget when they first show it to us in December. So we had a good discussion on that Saturday morning. Also have some minutes in the packet. And then as far as the sustainability budget task force, um, we still do meet once a week. I'm the liaison there. And Liz Klein, who is the chair of that committee, and I will be doing office hours. We're going to offer two so far. We're having one on Wednesday, the 8th of December from 11 to 12. And then Thursday, the 16th, from 12 PM to 1 PM. I will, um, that's going to be shared on the select board page. I'll share it to my page and then maybe we can, um, share it to the Hingham Public Schools page as well. Just so, um, anybody that wants, has any questions or feedback about that process, they can join our office hours.
Yeah, I think maybe it'd be good to get that to Heather. To get all, all of our channels for.
Sounds great. That was it.
Okay. All right, Carlos?
So C, CAPC is being meeting, uh, met last week. And one of the items that was decided, it was actually. To reach out to other entities in town, uh, whether they are a town entity or, or subset of, uh, the schools or, or the light plant. And issue resolution supporting, uh, supporting, uh, the creation of disposition. Additionally, uh, CAPC is working with the, the town administrator in submitting an RFP. To actually hire a consultant to help develop the planning, um, the actual action plan. The climate action plan. And, um, South School will be meeting Wednesday.
Great, thanks, Carlos. Uh, Tim, do you have anything other than? All right, Liza?
Wellness is meeting tomorrow. And salary negotiations will be scheduling a meeting. Around the superintendent search dates for discussions with unit B and C. And that's all.
Um, I have, the PRS school council will meet next Monday, the 13th. And I just wanted to update everyone on this fields group that is forming. John and Ness and I had been meeting with, um, we've met a couple of times with Mark Thoreau at the rec department. Along with. With Vicky Donlin, who's the chair of the rec department. And last time Bill Ramsey from the select board joined us. Um, as you probably remember, the rec department commissioned a field study and recommended that the management of all the fields in town be consolidated in one place. Which the rec has been managing. Um, and they've done a phenomenal job and they've worked with Katie Hartman and Doug Foley, Foley and all, and their staff. And it's, it's going well. But they've, so they've all recognized some projects that are going to need some attention or repair coming up. And so what we kind of discussed doing was kind of putting together a group from, you know, the stakeholders and the rec side and the school department. To kind of take a look at all of these, um, all of the facilities, the townwide facilities, to make sure that we have, that they meet the expectations. Of the, the people in town and what our students need to, our student athletes need. Um, and obviously the school department, the school committee will have a seat at the table because we're heavy users, especially the school, um, the ones on school grounds. But, um, so we are going to meet again, I think that is next month, next Monday as well. Um, to kind of go through, um, you know, the list of priorities and Mark Thoreau has done kind of a deep dive into everything. So. Well, there's more to come on that and we can update you. Okay, any, anyone have anything for 48 hours? No? Okay, um, and then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, Michelle?
I.
Jen?
I.
Ness?
I.
Uh, Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, and thank you all for sticking it out this long and the people in the audience too. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Good night.